To just look at it.
It's like herding cats, trying to get us out.
Oh, I don't like that. Look at it another way. And print it out.
In our seats.
I mean, now it's.
Ready to go.
They'll be interesting and informational.
All right. I'd like to call this regular board meeting of the Cook County Board of Commissioners to order on this Tuesday, December 21st at 10:30 a.m. Well, it's nearly 10:39 here. Please rise and join in saying the Pledge of Allegiance with us.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? I think, I think we do have some. Yes, Mr. Yorki.
Mr. Chair, I would like to propose that we swap my part of the agenda with Brady's so that the administrators' items come before the auditors. That'll enable us to leave the county budget and levy for, for the last. And the reason for that is I have some items that I think it could potentially impact the discussion about the budget and levy.
I think that makes sense. Does that make sense for everybody? Oh, Al Kynza, yes.
Yeah, and the same within the auditor's office. Switch the commissioner salary, schedule premiums first, and then the budget and levy.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense to me, too. Any, any concerns from anyone about that? Okay.
And, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to note that we do have County Attorney Hicken on the, on the conference phone.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right. So, to be clear here, we're gonna switch items five and six, and then within five, we'll be switching items A and B. With that, I would entertain a, a motion to approve that adjusted agenda. Commissioner Sullivan.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the adjusted agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. We have a motion. Is there support?
Swallison supports.
Thank you, Commissioner Swallison. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Hearing or seeing none? All in favor? Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Very good. Moving on to item two, public comment period. And this is a chance for any member of the public to come and speak before the board. If there's an item on the agenda, you can speak to that when, when the time comes. But do we have any, any members of the public that want to speak at this time? Doesn't appear to. Did we get any written communications?
Mr. Chairman, I did not.
Okay. Any from commissioners? Or two commissioners? Okay. Then I will close the public comment period and move on to the consent agenda. Item three. Are there any items from the consent agenda that a commissioner would like to pull and discuss further? I see one typo on the consent agenda. That's item C. USFV should be USFS, I believe. So with, with that small change, I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I would move to, motion to approve as a whole.
Thank you, Commissioner Swallison. We have a motion. Is there support?
Starley supports.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Hearing or seeing none? All in favor? Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item four, land services. We have Land Services Director Tim Nelson here joining us. Good morning, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have two, two items for you today. The first being a final plat approval. This plat has been in front of the, the board a number of times. Actually, initially started many years ago, but was then modified. It hadn't been recorded as, as the 12th lot subdivision, and then was modified over the course of this year, then to the eight lots that it represents right now. This came before the board, or the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners, August, September timeframe, and received approval for the final process. And the county surveyor then reviewed the, the changes that had been made and recommended additional changes, and that was then reviewed in front of the Planning Commission at the last meeting on December the 15th. And the Planning Commission recommends unanimously approval of the final plat.
Thank you, Director Nelson. Any questions from commissioners here? Commissioner Hawkins?
Yeah. So, I don't understand this stuff at all. And so I looked through Wayne's list of comments and then saw Charlie Trovel's map. I have no clue if, if all of it got incorporated. I can't tell. So, did Wayne look at this again and approve it? I was just curious how that worked.
Okay. Mr. Chair and Commissioner Hawkins, yeah, that's, that's generally the process is, is we get, the preliminary gets submitted, all of the, the copies get disseminated to all the different departments, including highway and auditors. And everybody's office has a chance to look at it, including the surveyor Wayne, provides comments back. Those changes are made, then a final submission is presented or submitted to the office. Then that is also sent out to all of the different departments, including the county surveyor, Mr. Hanche. Mr. Hanche came back with comments on the final submission, which then those were incorporated into the, the plat, and then that plat was then resubmitted again to Wayne, and we've not heard anything back from Wayne.
Okay.
Tim, could I interrupt real quick? I'm getting a message from the county attorney. Could you move closer to the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
There you go. Yes.
So, thank you. I just wanted to clarify. I have so much to learn about how this all works, so I appreciate that information.
Any other questions from commissioners here? Looks like not. So, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Sullivan.
I move to approve the Grandview Ridge final plat as proposed by the Cook County Planning Commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. We have a motion. Is there support?
Starley supports.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Hearing or seeing none? All in favor? Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Board. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. And we move on to item 4B, Laboda gravel pit CUP amendment.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This also was reviewed in front of the Planning Commission at the December the 15th meeting. This was discussed earlier with the, with the Planning Commission. And the main concerns that had been brought to bear throughout kind of the discussion, the initial thought had come before land services more than a year ago, and there's discussions and primarily focusing on the water resources and wetland impacts and things like that, but also balancing that with the need for washed aggregate materials within the county, especially on the East End, as it were. And so, the, the Laboda's met and retained engineering firm and are working, or have been working and will work with Yulin Brothers with regards to putting the application together and the operation of the wash plant as well. And after full discussion with the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission did recommend unanimously for approval, understanding the fact that we do have annual pit reviews. And so every year, we go through and do an evaluation of each of the gravel pit operations to including any amendments that have been made and such. And so the Planning Commission was comforted in the fact of knowing that not only is land services paying attention to this operation, or will be, but also that it will be coming before both the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners on an annual basis. The one kind of anomaly that did happen at the Planning Commission, so the Planning Commission went through the entire public hearing, received any of the public comments, they did unanimously approve the, the request, subject to the annual pit reviews, but what they had inadvertently missed out was the discussion on, on conditions. And if you read through the narrative, there, there are the, and the application, there are materials, or there is a bunch of materials, there are four conditions. And so we put conditions together, and I had submitted these out. And fortunately, in the fact that the Planning Commission is a recommendation body, they recommend to you, the Board of Commissioners can take and accept or overturn or modify a proven part or in whole, that we drafted up these conditions. We agreed with them and staff. We sent them to the applicants. They reviewed them, and they voluntarily accept those to be placed on them on this request. And I had also sent them out to the Planning Commission members, just to make sure that they understood that this was also going to be additionally proposed, is being basically proposed from the land services offices, as for the Board of Commissioners to go ahead and approve in the final approval, is the imposition of these conditions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. My, my take on the conditions is they are pretty much in the application itself, so it all seems congruent. I don't, I don't see a problem with that. Any other commissioners have questions or comments?
No.
I just appreciate the fact that data is being collected at different test sites around this area to really monitor wetland resources, and I feel very comfortable having listened to that entire discussion, that this is a good thing for us.
Any other, any other comments or questions? Commissioner Swallison?
I would move to accept the recommendation from the Cook County Planning Commission to amend the, an existing conditional use permit to allow for a wash plant operation subject to annual pit reviews for Laboda.
Thank you, Commissioner Swallison. We have a motion. Is there support? We have a motion on the floor. Is there support?
Sullivan supports.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. We have further discussion. Mr. Nelson?
Just a point of our, Mr. Chair, is I'd, I'd like for that motion to also include the imposition of the conditions that had come. They weren't expressly included in with that recommendation from the Planning Commission, but they should be included in with the motion.
So, amending with the four conditions.
Mr. Chair, I will amend my motion to include the conditions as stated.
Thank you, Commissioner Swallison. We have, we have a motion amended. Is there support for those amendments?
Sullivan supports those four.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. We have now an amended motion and amended support. Any further discussion?
I do, I have one.
Please, Commissioner Hawkins.
It's just clarification, because I understand this used to be Mr. Lane's, he would present this stuff, and sometimes it was presented to us as in resolution form versus motion form. So, is this a motion or a resolution where?
I, I will actually, that's a very good point, Commissioner Hawkins and, and Mr. Chair. I, I will be supplying a resolution. After each of the items that I've brought forth, I do get reminders to go ahead and bring resolutions or submit resolutions for signature. So, yes, I did not expressly prepare this as a resolution, simply because of the issues with the conditions as to whether or not there was going to be any discussions or modifications, but this will be submitted to, as a resolution.
Thank you. And I think I'm just sensitive to that fact as knowing how difficult it can be sometimes to get the correct paperwork, so thank you for.
Understood.
Doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. Any, any further discussion? Hearing or saying none? All in favor? Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you.
All right. Then that moves us down to item six to the administrator. Six A is approve American Rescue Plan Act budget. Administrator Yorki.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, before you today, we have the proposed budget for the county's expenditure of $1,061,124 that the county has been allocated under the American Rescue Plan Act. As you may recall, we've had meetings with community stakeholders to discuss the best way to spend these dollars. I, I should note, as a matter of process, I did check with the Association of Minnesota Counties to see how other counties were, were handling this in terms of the process for establishing and approving a budget. And it's really all over the place. Some counties have, have just, they kind of just decided themselves how they were going to spend the dollars, and they're going ahead with implementing it. I, I think our process is a little unusual. I haven't heard that there, that other counties have had quite the, the extent of community dialogues that we've had, but again, knowing the way that we do things here in Cook County, it's a very collaborative community, and I felt it was important to, to have those discussions. In terms of your consideration of this budget today, this is not something that can't be revisited later on if we need to make adjustments. This is kind of how the dollars are proposed to be used right now. You can see there are basically five elements. The first is public health pandemic response staffing. There's a very clear need for this. And the, the one thing I would note is that when we put this budget together, we anticipated that the need would be greatest in 2022. And so there is nothing budgeted for the out years of '23 and '24. You know, the, the way things are going with Omicron, and who knows what other kinds of variants we may see in future months, this may be something that we'd want to revisit. But we do know that there's a need for the $116,000 in 2022. And the other thing to note about that is that that would offset the expenditure of county levy dollars. The next item on the budget is Behavioral Health Crisis Response Pilot, which would embed a social worker in the sheriff's office to assist in responding to calls that are, that are related to or triggered by a mental health issue. As we all know, the, the pandemic has created serious mental health challenges for the community. And so, so, you know, a lot of the calls that our law enforcement officers go, go on frequently have some, some element of mental health issue involved. And so this, this would give us a new resource to, this would give us a new resource to address that, that challenge. I, I did notice, I meant to update the, the attachment on this item. The one that is posted to the county website has $50,000 for '22 and 50 for '23. The actual proposal would be to have $80,000 in 2023. And then the, the wastewater, water infrastructure item would be reduced by $30,000 in the last year, in 2024. We do have $20,000 budgeted for personal protective equipment related to ongoing pandemic response. And then we've also been talking with the folks at Arrowhead Cooperative to, to budget something for broadband access for lower income households. The details of that program have yet to be determined, but Arrowhead's really eager to, to work with us on this, and I think it's going to provide the community with a really important resource in terms of giving households that otherwise might not be able to afford broadband, better access to online learning, job opportunities, and, and other education. So, so that, that is, those are the five elements of, of the budget. And again, this is not something, if you, if you approve the budget today, it doesn't mean we can't come back to it later if we find that we need to reallocate these dollars for, for some reason. For example, if, if we decide that we would want to add or reallocate funding for 2023 to support some additional public health staffing, assuming that the pandemic were still going on, we would be able to do so.
Thank you, Administrator Yorki. To be clear, you mentioned for the behavioral health, $80,000 for 2023?
Correct. So, that would be a total of $130,000. And then the wastewater, water infrastructure would be reduced by $30,000 in the last year of that program. So, that amount would end up being 645,124.
Okay. Thank you. And I also appreciate you pointing out that we may need to adjust, especially with that first one, public health pandemic response, based on what pandemic is doing. And, you know, when we first heard of these dollars, we were in such a place that seemed like, oh, great, it can all go to infrastructure, or, you know. And now we can, we can see that we've, it's, it's most likely that only half of that will be able to, but, or less, depending on, on what, what happens down the road with, with the pandemic. So, I appreciate, you know.
Yeah. One thing I would add, too, is in, in these conversations that we had back in June and September, we, we reached out to the, the public health and healthcare folks first, because we saw that as being the primary need in, in terms of the use of these dollars. And surprisingly, there was very strong support from folks in the healthcare world for using a lot of these funds for housing.
Oh, yeah.
So, I think everybody in the community recognizes what a strong need that is. And, you know, adequate housing has a profound impact on public health in a community. And so, using these dollars in that way serves that purpose as well.
The, the only other thought that, that I have in my mind immediately is that I'm hoping there will be further federal dollars coming for infrastructure projects. And so I want to be strategic in how we're using these, but just knowing that we can go back and adjust this budget gives me great comfort. Because, you know, I just want to prioritize the public health and then, and then, and then infrastructure down there, even though we all know we, we need it. We all know we need it all. Commissioner Starley, please.
Thank you, Chairman. So, the wastewater, water infrastructure is great for Grand Marais, but I'm wondering, we don't have anything in the West End. How would that work for supporting anything there?
Yeah. So, I don't see this as, I mean, I, I think this could be used potentially for smaller scale water infrastructure projects that don't necessarily have centralized water and sewer. So, so I don't see this as being specifically targeted at the Grand Marais.
Okay. Like, the apartment development there in Lutzen, there's more land, and the only infrastructure, of course, is they need to have septic and well. So, being broader, we're looking at, when we talk about affordable housing, if there would be some expansion within the next couple of years in the West End, which there is in Tofti. This would apply then?
I believe so. I, I would want to check the federal guidance to, to confirm that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. You know, at one time, we talked about having a sewer system in Schroeder and Tofti and having a big plant and doing all of that, and it didn't work out. So, had it worked out, we would be able to apply then some help in that direction. And I'm sure Hole and Area probably doesn't have nothing, nothing up there either. So, we'll just see how this all works out in the next couple of years.
But I appreciate the, the suggestion that we should be looking for ways to kind of spread these dollars about the community.
Sure.
Yeah. And it does bring, I mean, I have a lot to learn on, as far as water and wastewater is concerned, but it does bring to my mind potential for, for doing more of those concentrated centralized systems. My understanding is Terrace Point has a system in place, and I thought Bluefin also had a pretty substantial, but I don't know all the different classifications and the ins and outs. But there, I guess there could be potential there, but that's just to be determined. So, yeah, it's good that it doesn't say Grand Marais water, wastewater.
Right. All right.
And we can have some flexibility there. Other questions or concerns from commissioners? Commissioner Hawkins?
Yeah. I just want to make sure I understand this. So, the pandemic response staffing for two full-time educators, that's what's currently here. This isn't two more educators. Is that correct?
This is, one of them I know, one of them was budgeted. And actually, I, I think Alison McIntyre may be watching, so I.
On her way down.
Okay. I did ask her to, to tune into this part of the discussion, because I thought there might be questions about this, this element.
Okay. So, and then the behavioral health crisis pilot.
Mm-hmm.
Why 50,000 one year and 80,000 the next year?
I think there's an expectation that there will be some grant funding available to help cover a part of the cost in the first year.
And do we have numbers of, like, how many incidences in the last few years has this been needed by our law enforcement staff?
I don't have that information available. I do know anecdotally that frequently when law enforcement is called to, to a residence, you know, it's, maybe it's a domestic disturbance or something like that, and frequently those kinds of incidents involve mental health challenges.
Right. And, I mean, that is the trend, and I spoke to our sheriff anecdotally about this also. He says that's a large number of their cases that they respond to, which makes me think, why isn't this in their department then? If they, if the majority of their deputies are responding to mental health crises, maybe instead of a deputy sheriff, we need a mental health crisis person out of their budget, because that's their need.
Well, it's a community need. And these dollars are ineligible, I mean, that's an eligible use of the ARBIT dollars. So.
And that's, that's a good, it's hard to, where do you draw the line? There's, there's a blend, and so there's a lot of collaboration happening among, around the region, and that's a large, that's, I think, maybe exclusively how it's being addressed is a collaboration, because traditionally, our peace officers are not trained in behavioral health response, and so others are. But there is that need and that, that, that need to mesh because of public, I mean, safe, the safety aspect of it, but then also the nuances and the specialized training with behavioral health. So, I think I hear what you're saying.
So, that's where I'm going. We need training for our sheriff's department, rather than adding another position in public health. That's my opinion.
Oh.
It, I'm not saying it's not needed. I just like to make sure that the services are providing. We're making sure that the people who are responding regardless are trained in dealing with mental health issues.
And, and that's what public health and human services staff are. They are trained. So, that's.
I want our, I want our deputies.
We should all be trained that way.
Yes.
Commissioner Swallison?
Yeah. I, I think what, what people have found that have gone through this to a large degree and have implemented these programs, the reason they've implemented them that way is because the training and the extent of the training needed to effectively deal with these situations is well beyond what you would ever train a law enforcement person to do. Well beyond. All right? And so, I think it's admirable to go after this from a pilot perspective, be able to get measurable information and understanding of the effectiveness and what you can learn from it through these, you know, this mechanism, before we add additional people. We're just literally, we're testing something. I mean, but that's, if you, if you do some research into this process, what you're finding is the, the training is so unique and different between what you train a law enforcement person to do and what you train the people to deal with mental health crisis. I'm not saying you can't get there, but if you're willing to invest in multiple-year degrees for all law enforcement people, which I don't think we're headed that direction. Certainly not in a small community here.
It is. It would be the ideal, but I don't know.
It would, what, it'd be wonderful.
Yeah.
To have one person that had that ca, that full capability, but it's not going to happen.
Yeah. Yeah. And it's, and it's, yeah. I think, I'm sorry, yeah, Commissioner Starley.
I kind of disagree that one person couldn't help out. One of the workshops that I went to, that was a topic of the mental health and how law enforcement are so affected by it. They're not trained to go in and deal with mental situations of suicide in different scenarios. So they're really promoting that each county look at, can they come in with someone who has that background that can join a law enforcement call when it says, this isn't anything we can deal with. And so therefore, it could be a pilot program, it could be however we want to use the funds, but we're not short of serious stuff going on up here. And I really want to support the law enforcement to the extent that we're willing to maybe put some money toward, toward that end.
Yeah.
Just as Commissioner Solsing was saying.
Administrator Yorkey?
The, the other thing I would say is that this, this model is one that many, many communities across the country are using now, is embedding trained social workers into law enforcement units. And so this isn't something off the wall, or, I mean, it's, it's proven to be effective. And, and so, you know, and again, these are, this is an eligible use of these dollars. And, and I think we're going to see a lot of value come out of this. It's, it's going to be really, I mean, assuming that the board approves this, of course, it's going to be really interesting to see kind of what, what the, what the results are.
And I think, I think what I'm hearing Commissioner Hawkins say is that there, there could be some great value in getting, at least some more training for, for our public safety officers to, to, to integrate with potentially a pilot program, because it is important not to have silos. It is important to have integration. And I, I think that's what, I don't, and I should not put words in your mouth, but I don't think you're saying every, well, maybe you were, every single law enforcement officer should be trained to the degree that a social worker is, just that there could be some training. And I, I think, I think there's movement in that direction, too. I don't know, I don't know which, which comes first, you know, if, and just from the conversations I've been having in some of the regional organizations, is, just as Administrator Yorkey said, this is the way many departments are going, is to start with that kind of specialist approach. And then even that can affect, it's almost on the job training, more or less, for law enforcement.
Absolutely.
So, so, yeah, I don't, I don't know best there by any means, but that, I'll, I'll go with some success stories. Commissioner Solsing?
Yeah. And I think that the point I was trying to make as well is this is a pilot program. If we find this to be effective, and we find it works out well, to continue to build the teams, the teamwork and that type of thing, we may very well entertain having these people be full-time employees of the sheriff's department, and therefore would be embedded in their budget, and not come out of public health. All right, there would always still be a tie there, but you see what I mean? The options are out there to do whatever we think is best after we've run through this pilot and gathered the information, and then make an informed decision of, A, does it work effectively for us? If not, B, what would we do different if we wanted to continue to do it? And finally, where would these people reside as far as full-time employment in their four budget? That's just my thought.
Good conversation. Please, Allison?
Just a, a point of clarification regarding the employment of this person. This would not be a PHHS department employee. As we're proposing, it would be an employee of a, a regional mental health care center. HDC is who we're working with at this point, as they are providing the service after hours in Cook County, and we feel it would just make sense from a continuity standpoint. So the, the funding for this program, while flowing through the PHHS department, it wouldn't fund an additional social worker on our team. They would be an employee of HDC and then work, and this is very much by design, so that they can effectively work across systems between human services here at the county and in Grand Portage, with law enforcement and with the emergency department, as some of those primary access points for people in crisis.
No, thank you. That.
That's very helpful.
It is very helpful. And we did get off track, because of course, it does say right there that it's a contract with HDC is, is the pilot. So, I mean, we, we went down a number of different roads, but it was, it was good conversation. But we did also have questions of just the public health pandemic response staffing. Commissioner Hawkins, did you want to ask Allison more?
Yeah, I'm just, it says the cost for two full-time public health educators through 2022 calendar year. And I'm just, in my head, I'm thinking, we're just transferring money from this fund to your budget fund? Or are we hiring two additional public health?
No, this would offset the cost to the department and the county for the two existing public health educators within the PHHS department.
Thank you. I just needed to make sure I understood what it was talking about.
Thank you. Any other, let's see, questions for, for Allison or for James regarding this, this budget? Commissioner Hawkins?
I have one that's going to relate to the next item on the agenda.
Okay.
And if we are going to be expected to come up with a quarter of a million dollars for testing, can, I think, I think we should use the federal government's own money, rather than levy dollars. Now, I really want affordable housing. I really want broadband expanded. All right. But if the federal government is going to make us spend a quarter of a million dollars, I think we should use their money. So.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense. We don't want to put it on, on the taxpayers. And I bet you, James, he's going to call Molly to speak to that.
Molly.
Last, last we had talked about this, it was not clear.
Molly accidentally disconnected.
Okay.
Molly, are you there?
Yes, I'm sorry about that.
No worries, no worries. Thanks.
Hi, Molly. We, we had a, well, no, we actually had a question just about the eligibility of COVID testing with the American Rescue Plan dollars. Can we do that?
Sure, yes. That's my analysis from the documents that I found on, I have to have the email in front of me again to give you the right words. But essentially, the answer is yes. There is pretty great flexibility in the category of responding to the pandemic, to the public health response to the pandemic. And I would put this, you know, paying for the testing of employees pursuant to the executive order and OSHA guidance as a response to the pandemic. Now, know that the, I did the research as far as the eligibility or use of funds. And I didn't expand my research to, can the county pay itself, or can the local government pay itself for that response? Who, who are the eligible recipients? But I'm pretty sure the con, the local governments can. I think that's what James has found. And that's consistent with the budget that he's proposed.
So to, to that point, we may, we may very well need to shuttle some of the infrastructure dollars up to, into, into a, a separate public health pandemic response or, or something. Is that, or what are your thoughts?
Yeah. So moving ahead to, to the vaccination and testing policy, since, since this does, in fact, impact the conversation we're having about this budget, we don't yet know. We, we have not yet started collecting attestation forms from employees regarding their vaccination status. So we do not know how many folks, how many county employees are not yet vaccinated and would participate in the testing program. What we do know is that the cost of testing is pretty significant. I was talking with, with Grace Brennager about this. We, the cost can be as high as two hundred and fifty dollars a test. It can be as low as maybe a hundred dollars and change. So I was estimating a hundred and fifty dollars to be on the safe side. If we have thirty employees testing, they would have to test every week. That would be forty-five hundred dollars a week. And the term of the emergency temporary standard is six months. So you can do the math. It ends up being about eighteen thousand dollars a month for, for six months. So that, that does, that is potentially a significant cost. And it's not something that's currently in the county budget. When, when I became aware that this, this cost could be borne by the county, I did do some checking around, and I'd gotten mixed feedback from AMC on whether the use of ARPA dollars could, could cover that expense. But I'm very comfortable, if, if county attorney Hickon thinks that this, this would be an eligible expense, that is certainly something that the board should consider. In terms of the consideration of the ARPA budget item, I think if, if the board wants to revisit the expenditure of this funding for, for the purpose of covering a testing program, I would, at a minimum, like the board to consider approving today the first two items in the budget, which are the public health staffing and the behavioral health crisis response pilot, so that those, those two efforts can move forward with some certainty. And then we could look at the rest of the budget for, for discussion about whether those funds need to be reallocated for, for a testing program.
If you can hear me, I, I could give you a little more detail now that I have my email that I had sent out on this issue in front of me.
Yes, please.
So I'm just going to quote my email. So paying for the testing appears to be an eligible use of funds made available to local governments by ARP. One category listed is to, quote, "support public health expenditures," unquote, examples of which they provide, quote, "funding COVID-19 mitigation efforts, medical expenses, behavioral health care in certain public health and safety staff." So I think the testing of, or I'm sorry, the, yeah, the testing of employees, which is an alternative to the vaccine requirement under the proposed policy, likely falls under that list, under both medical expenses and COVID-19 mitigation efforts. And paying any extra staff who might be needed to do that testing could fall under the public health and safety staff, which is one of the examples listed of that category. It's the Department of Treasury, which has the guidance for ARP. So you can go to their website and go to their use of funds page. And you'll see this language quoted. They say, "Within these overall categories, recipients have broad flexibility to decide how best to use this funding to meet the needs of their communities." So it's based on that language and my review of the Department of Treasury guidance that's linked to that website. That forms the basis of my opinion.
Thank you, Attorney Hickon. I guess along these lines, too, we had a little uncertainty as to, as to whether we needed to take on that whole cost. Was there any further revelations there?
The county attorney is pretty certain that Minnesota statutes 181, 61 prohibits the county from expecting employees to pay for any of the cost of that testing. So that, that cost would have to be borne exclusively by the organization.
Okay, thank you. And, boy, you know, I'm just thinking, ideally, we would be able to have our implementation plan all the way through 2026. But the reality of it is, is there are so many moving parts still, that we're just going to have to, I feel like we have to go year by year, basically. And because, and I guess for your benefit, Allison, we had just a little bit of discussion about, well, what about 2023 for the public health response staffing? Like, that could very easily need to be funded, you know, unfortunately, but, you know, going forward. So I feel, myself, talking out loud here, very comfortable with the 2022 public health pandemic response staffing, as well as the behavioral health crisis response. And I think that's what you're asking for, Administrator Yorkey, is, is those two, those two lines. And, you know, I, I don't know how comfortable I am, frankly, with the column of 2023 in those two lines. Like, it could very easily move, move bigger.
I guess I would ask, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
But that was the long and short of it.
I, I would ask Allison, in terms of the, the board's deciding to fund the first year of the pilot, would that impact feasibility of, of starting it, or would it need to be two years?
I think, as it relates to our contract development with HDC, it would be a benefit to know that funding is guaranteed through both years of the pilot project. I don't know if Administrator Yorkey spoke to this, but one of the rationales for increasing funding in year two is just given the uncertainty with what might be available at a state and regional level. We do have some funding through the Regional Arrowhead Behavioral Health Initiative to support daytime crisis expansion that we intend to carry over from 2021 into 2022, and, and have the ability to request additional funds. But just given the uncertainty, wanted to build that into the budget for year two, to know that that is sustainable after getting our initial financial analysis from HDC.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Solsing?
Just a question, Allison. Is, is the commitment for the two years, is, is that something that you are focused on, to also get that commitment for the resource to be here with the funding set out for two years, so that people knew they weren't coming up for just a shorter period of time?
Right, yes. I, I think that's an important component, as well as it relates to filling that position.
I just, I, I thought it might be. I just wanted to make sure before we, when we looked at it.
Very good point.
I guess the other thing I would add, in terms of the board's contemplation of delaying the approval of this budget, is that the, the emergency temporary standard, although it was upheld by the Sixth Circuit Court, is now before the Supreme Court. And so there's still uncertainty about whether the ETS will actually be implemented. And so I can see where there, it would be advantageous to postpone a decision on the full, the budget for the full amount of funding, until we have a little more certainty about how that's going to proceed.
Well, I mean, I'm comfortable with this budget, but it's almost guaranteed we have to revisit it.
Correct.
And so I don't, I don't see any harm with passing this whole thing, and then having to go back and redoing a bit of it, but open to commissioner thoughts there, too. I see, I see some nods.
Well, I guess, I'm, I'm, just have hesitation about approving a budget, knowing there most likely will be a major expense that we are not putting in here. And I guess I'm okay with this, with maybe the caveat, if the Supreme Court upholds the ETS, this will come back before us again, and we're, we'll readjust numbers. Because I really think, this whole issue really bothers me. And I just don't think.
The cost of testing, that issue, yeah.
Yeah. This, well, the whole, how it came about. So I just don't think taxpayer levy dollars, I get, it's, whether it comes out of this pot or this pot, I get it. But seriously, federal government, you mandate something, you pay for it. This is their money. It's the symbol of it for me. So.
And it probably varies state by state, maybe, as well, you know, because it is state statute that says we cannot test. So there's, it's messy, huh?
Yeah.
And that's also true, it's also true that because we are, we have our own OSHA, our own state OSHA, with, with a state plan, that if we, if we were not under a state plan, I mean, it's always been Minnesota OSHA's practice to apply these kinds of regulations, both to the public and private sector. But the federal ETS only applies to private employers.
Correct.
So that's another kind of wrinkle in the whole discussion.
Oh. Yeah. And so, um, I guess Commissioner Hawkins, I don't think any of us want the county levy to be paying for testing. And, and it's uncertain if that will have to be the case. It sounds like you're expecting it to go to, to, to be upheld at the federal level. And I don't have enough knowledge or experience to know what to expect there. So I, I don't, I don't feel strongly that we need to include that amount in there, but just know that we may have to take it out of there. It's almost a horse apiece, really.
And Mr. Chair, I would just say, just as a group, I, I think there's general consensus, as you stated, that we're all feeling that same way. We may have more discussion about it at the time because we hate to, we hate to deprive the community of other benefits of this money as it, as it is. And you could get into a long philosophical debate about that. But in the end, if the cost is real and it's in front of us and it would need to be put on the taxpayer and we have other federal dollars that could offset that, I'm certainly going to be open for that discussion to move in that direction.
I think that's very well stated. And given that, I'd move to approve the budget as is, knowing that we will come back and revisit that.
And to be clear, thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. We have a motion, is there support?
Swalson supports.
Thank you, Commissioner Swalson. And for the discussion, I'd say to be clear, as is, you mean that additional $30,000 in 2023?
Oh, yes, yes.
Yep.
Correct.
That's how I took it.
Yep. Good clarity.
It's good to be clear.
Yes. Any further discussion there? Coinant pause. All right, well, hearing or seeing none, all in favor? I oppose, same sign, a motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Board, thank you, Administrator Yorki, and thank you, Director McIntyre.
Very good. Okay, we can move on then to the next item, which is the option of the General Services Administration meal incidental reimbursement rates for official travel. Long story short, for, for a long time, the county has had reimbursement rate of $7 for breakfast, $10 for lunch, $15 bucks for, for dinner when, when folks are traveling on official business. And we all know that if you're going to Twin Cities, for example, these amounts are generally insufficient on average to pay for the costs of those meals. Most local governments, in my experience, do adopt GSA reimbursement rates for official travel. It's a simple way of, of making sure that those rates stay current. GSA does reevaluate every five years to make sure that the rates are sufficient for, for paying those costs. And so this, this request today is for the board to approve our adoption of these reimbursement rates for, for official travel. The other thing I would note, there is not actually a policy attached to, to this item. We would work to, to develop that policy within the next month and bring it back to you for approval. But I felt it was important to, to get your general approval on this before the new year so that we could have a clean, a clean break between the old and the new. So that's, that's the request before you.
Thank you, Administrator Yorki. Any, any questions or comments from commissioners?
Oh, I should note also, so when Brady and I were talking about this last week, I included, he, he mentioned several figures in terms of his calculation of the cost difference. And he used data from 2019 because that was the last year that things were normal. Obviously, we haven't had a lot of travel since the pandemic began, so it would be misleading to use those numbers. But if, if we ever return to whatever you want to define as normal, using the 2019 numbers, Brady did do some estimates. And the, the actual cost difference, and Brady, correct me if I'm wrong, would be more in the neighborhood of $6,000 to $7,000 and not the $3,500 that I indicated here.
Yeah, it, and it all depends on, you know, where people are traveling to. So it could, it could vary. If there's out of state travel, we don't know what those rates are. But Twin Cities, higher, Duluth is higher, but outstate, less. So it's just the, the makeup of it.
So what I, what I just heard is it could be $7,000 instead of the $3,500?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Yep. And apologize for the misunderstanding.
And that's good, I guess, perspective. That gives us a range and something that I'm pretty comfortable putting into the budget. But what are other people's thoughts? Commissioner Swalson?
Well, I, I've always thought that if you've asked employees to travel and you should cover their reasonable, you know, expenses for that travel. And really that's what this is about. This isn't trying to give people more or asking them to, to, you know, dine. And it certainly doesn't support dining in fine dining or anything along those lines. But I think what we heard during the last meeting were discussions around people coming back and, and in fact, their, the reimbursement wasn't going to match their actual expenses. And really that's what it was coming down to is those additional things you have, you know, with travel, just trying to be reasonable and accommodate people so that they can, you know, subside effectively down there, not, not, not living high or anything. But, you know, just in fact, covering their normal expenses.
What, what really helped me, I'm sorry, Commissioner Starley, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say that, you know, then I looked at it, well, then you can spend up to so many dollars for breakfast, up to so many for dinner.
That's right. You're not obligated to spend.
A little bit, yeah. So what, what is the actual GSA broken down into breakfast, lunch and dinner?
It varies by area. So if you look at the handout.
Yes, according to St. Louis County and.
Page three.
Yeah.
You know, certain areas are cheaper than others. If you were to travel to the San Francisco Bay area, that per diem would be higher than it would be if you were going to Des Moines.
Yeah.
But it's for, for perspective and for the public's benefit, Duluth breakfast is 18, lunch is 20, dinner is 36. And that's the same as the cities. And that, that's, you know, a significant difference from our current 7, 10 and 15. And so what, what really helped me through this is just looking at that total budget impact and, and where that all fits in. But I've experienced it and heard it for years from, from staff who have traveled that, that it's not quite cutting it and, to say the least. And, and that they've been just paying out of pocket. And, and as Commissioner Swalson, I think, very well put, you know? That's, that's not right. Auditor Powers?
Just, the current rates are actually 10, 12 and 15.
Oh, thank you.
So they add, they add up to 37.
Okay. Not 7, 10, 15, as I said, 10, 12, 15. Yep. Thank you.
And the outstate rates, when you're not in the cities, are 13 for breakfast, 15 for lunch, 26 for dinner, so.
Oh, so Duluth and Minneapolis are significantly higher than outstate even.
Two highest they showed, for example, Sam.
Well, Commissioner Hawkins, you had your hand up as well.
Yeah, so currently we do not require the receipt amount to be used for. And I'm wondering, will we now? So that if you get $36 for dinner, but you only spent 20, are we reimbursing 20 or are we going to reimburse the 36?
It's a flat rate. So there's no, there's no receipts. That's the whole point of having this kind of system is it avoids all the administrative cost of having to save receipts and process them. And it's, it's a more efficient way of, of dealing with it.
I just want to understand how this is working for the bookkeeping department when somebody comes in and says, well, I was in Duluth or I was in the city. But no, I was in Rochester or I was in Virginia with all these different rates. I'm just, how does this work?
That's a good, that's a good question because we don't, we don't need to, we can set it, we can set it however we want. What I would advocate for is a standard way so that we're not doing all, all different ones. And whether that is the Duluth rate or the Minneapolis rate, which is the same, or that, what they call the standard rate, you know, that's for, up for discussion in our determination.
Well, so the, the way it worked in Johnson County, where I worked previously, is you, when you are planning a work trip, you would go to the GSA website. Let's say I'm going to Des Moines for a conference. I would go to the GSA website. I would find out what the, what the reimbursement rate for Des Moines would be. And then I would submit a reimbursement request to accounting that would have the, the full cost of whatever GSA says breakfast, lunch and dinner would be in that, in that area. I would submit that and then I would get a check before I left. And I would have that, that cash, for example, to, to spend on the trip. And so it's really just, that's, that's the beauty of this system is it just really simplifies and eliminates a lot of work because you know upfront, here's what the cost is going to be. You can get the employee reimbursed and then they can go do the trip. And there's no work on the backend to collect receipts and process. And, you know, it's, that's a very high-touch, laborious process. And this, this makes it just a lot easier.
That's a novel idea for me is to collect before I go because right now I'm, you know, collecting after and half the time forgetting. And, you know, that's, that's a novel idea.
And I mean, I'm, I'm not saying we could still reimburse afterward. I'm just saying that's the way that, that.
But with this system, it allows you to do that. And for many, particularly when you have newer employees that may be going for a training thing or something else, or maybe for their first conference in some area, getting that money ahead of time makes all the difference in the world.
Or if you're commissioner.
No, it can, I mean, it, it really does make a difference, you know?
Yep, yep, for sure.
Well, yeah, and just the, if you think about the hassle of like collecting receipts on a trip and then having to produce those when you get back and somebody has to go through everything and add it all up. And I mean, it's, it's a lot of work. And so, you know, yes, the, the rate of reimbursement may be higher, but I think there's a significant cost savings on the backend related to reduced workload.
Yep. Well, good discussion. Any, any further thoughts? Be nice, I think, to have something nailed down here so we can have a further good discussion on our, on our next items. I feel like most of our travel is probably to Duluth. There's, there's some to the cities. There's some to, I guess, in my experience, Virginia. I think there's some Grand Rapids as well, Cloquet, St. Cloud. I guess we've had conferences there. So it does vary a bit, but, but it'd be nice to, to get some kind of rate here.
And I would add, I mean, this, this is for overnight travel. So for example, if you had a meeting in Duluth from say 1:00 to 3:00 PM on a given day, you know, you obviously drive, drive down there and come back the same day. This wouldn't necessarily kick in. This is more for longer trips. And the policy that, that will bring to you in January will kind of define those parameters of how the, how the rates would be applied.
Well, and so what do commissioners think about having a rate versus having different rates for different places? Or what, what are your, what are your thoughts there, right? I guess you.
I, I think, I think it should be specific to the area that an employee is traveling to. So, and again, I mean, GSA updates these things all the time. So, so it's a very easy resource to access. And you can get that information immediately. I, I would not advocate setting a rate that gets applied to whatever the destination is. Cause I don't, I don't think that would be fair.
Okay.
And then this would be something that in HR would become part of your onboarding. So it has some implications there, but I think it would be a very, very good way and a consistent way for all of us to operate, very fair way.
So what I was thinking was we would have just a, a straight. But, but what you're suggesting, Administrator Yorki, is that we do use the actual online resource. And I'm open, I'm open to that too. I just was trying to keep it simple for staff. But if it's really quite simple, I'm, I'm very comfortable with that. And I think that could lead to more efficiencies with the actual costs. To keep it, keep it accurate.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Sullivan.
I'd like to move to adopt the GSA meal and incidental reimbursement rates for official travel.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. We have a motion, is there support?
Starley, support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? Another pause.
All I can say is it beats a peanut butter sandwich.
And oatmeal.
I, I, and I truly do, I know this is going to help my costs personally. I hope it helps all of our costs. I hope it helps staff costs as well. This will be much more fair for staff. And that's, that's one of my top goals here.
And I think we do need to remind people then up ahead, they need to look this up before they leave to submit it. You know, that's what you're saying, to submit, to get the food money ahead of time.
Ahead, yep.
Okay. So this is a new twist.
Well, and that's, that's one option. And I think, as, I think Administrator Yorki was saying, it is also fine to do it after the fact. It's just you won't have that money ahead of the travel, so.
Yeah, okay.
And the policy will have a procedure that describes how that all works.
They actually do, can do advance, some do advance now, but they use these old rates.
Well, I'm impressed. All right, I'll call the vote. All in favor? I oppose, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Board, thank you, Administrator Yorki. And now we're on to item 6C. Approve COVID-19 vaccination and testing policy.
All right. And we've kind of nibbled on this already, but just to, to back up a little bit. So as you all know, Minnesota OSHA has announced its intention to implement the federal emergency temporary standard for COVID vaccination, which in our case comes along with a testing option if we want to implement that. And so as soon as, as the federal OSHA issued this on November 5th, it was immediately challenged. And, and there was a stay issued on November 6th. That stay was lifted earlier this week. Gosh, everything's such a blur, in, in the last week. And, and so.
You were going to say recently.
In the last week. It was like sometime last week, I don't know. It's, it's all a blur, but anyway. And so, and then as soon, of course, well, it was Friday, that's right. It came out Friday. They lifted the stay and then immediately another lawsuit was filed requesting an emergency stay from the US Supreme Court. And so we have not yet heard what the Supreme Court intends to do about this. But we do know that the deadline for the implementation of this has changed. It is now January 10th to, to get the attestations from employees. And then by February 9th, we have to have a testing program up and running. This assumes that the Supreme Court either upholds the, the standard or issues a stay, but then basically upholds it after that, in which case there might be another change to the deadlines. But bottom line is, this is like any other OSHA requirement that, that we're obligated to meet. And so we are, we've been working. And I want to recognize the folks who've done the most work on this, who are County Attorney Molly Hickon, our HR Director Leah Ekstrom, Grace Grenogar, Allison McIntyre from PHHS have also provided a lot of input on this policy. And it's, it's very closely. And it's, it's very closely modeled on Minnesota management and budgets policy. But, but we have made some adjustments to it to reflect things that don't, don't apply to us as a local government. But, but essentially the substance of it is the same. And so the, the request today is for you to approve this, this policy so that we can move forward with implementation of a vaccination requirement and a testing program if the Supreme Court upholds the ETS. The big question, as we've already discussed, is who pays for the testing? And that's, that's something that, as we've already mentioned, that cost would have to be borne by county government. So, um, you know, if this thing is upheld, we'll have to come back, as we discussed, to, to talking about the budget, the ARPA budget, and consider whether this board would want to use some of those funds for, for covering those testing costs. At this point, I mean, I'm, I'm not a betting person. If I were, I would, I would guess the Supreme Court isn't going to view this very favorably. But you never know. They may decide to uphold it, in which case we'll have to move forward. And so the other thing to be very, very clear about is that the county will not implement this policy until there is a legal requirement that we do so. And I want to be clear about that because there's a lot of angst within the organization about this. There are a number of staff who have not yet been vaccinated. And I, I want to make clear that, you know, we, we're not in a position to be giving people an excuse to leave employment with county government. We do need all hands on deck. We already have a high level of turnover. And I, I want to make, if we have to implement this policy, I want to make it as easy for all concerned to, to meet the requirements of the policy and, and continue working for, for the organization. And so that's, that's what this is geared toward. And I guess with that, I would pause and just see if there are any questions or concerns about the policy itself.
Thank you, Administrator Yorki. Questions? Concerns? Mr. Hawkins?
I have a lot of concerns. This re, I've lost sleep over this. This whole presidential executive order upsets me just as much as the one by the last president that this board had to deal with. I resent the fact that I have the, now have to ask my friends and neighbors who are employees here their health history and then have the authority to deny them a job because of this. I don't think that's my right. I don't think it's the government's right to stand in between a patient and her doctor. Health information is private. It should not be in our HR department. Now, I trust that you're going to keep it private, but nobody should have to do that to have employment. And this, so, I'm sorry, yes, this upsets me. And I would suggest that we put this off till January 4th. I hate that we have to do this. We're probably going to have to do it, but we don't have to do it yet. And so I would prefer we wait until the Supreme Court tells us we have to do it. If they don't, yay, let's drop that, drop this whole thing. So that's my opinion and thank you for letting me vent because I have, this just really bothers me.
Yeah. Well, thank you for, for expressing that, your concerns. Because it's, it's very clear that you're upset and, um, and for a good cause. Commissioner Swalson?
Yeah, and I appreciate your feelings on this. And no, none of us appreciate an unfunded mandate or the intrusiveness of this. You know, I, I appreciate the circumstances in which we're in. Some people have opinions that this is necessary. Others feel strongly that it certainly is not. My view of what we're doing today is acknowledging the work that has been done by many to put us in a position to be prepared if something was to be put on the plate and saying, you have, okay, this is it, you have to implement. If we haven't put something in place as a contingency for that event, then we will have to come back together as a board to approve it. Whenever that is. It doesn't matter. It wouldn't, it wouldn't wait for another meeting. You would have to call a special meeting and come back and do it. And so my view, and that's just sharing my opinion, my view of what we're doing and being asked to do today is to approve a framework such that if we are put in the position that we have to implement, we're prepared to do that. As the county administrator very clearly stated, we have no intention of putting this in place unless it is required by law. And all we're doing today is, we're not agreeing with any decisions that's been made by anyone. We're simply trying to prepare so that we don't, we don't have to react in an emergent condition at the time. I mean, really, that's my opinion. That's what we're being asked to do today by the county administrator.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Swalson. Commissioner Sullivan?
I, I feel very similarly to Commissioner Swalson. Being in education, I have lived 42 years of my career with unfunded mandates. And preparation is key. And so I would recommend that we strongly consider adopting this policy so that we're not scrambling at the last minute.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. I, I have some more specific questions about the policy if, if we could dive in a little bit.
Please, please.
Well, and first off, I, I do want to thank you for your work on this. And Leah, your, your work on this and Allison, everyone's work on this, I know, is, and Molly, everyone's work is, it's been very stressful and, and taxing and, um, and, and not pleasant, to say, to say the very least. So I really do appreciate the work being, being put into this and, and, and just the position that, that we are as an organization put into. So that's that. But getting into the, the policy itself a little bit, I was curious just about using the community center as a, as a facility versus, say, the clinic, if you could speak to that a little bit. I think it's a good thing to discuss.
Sure. That, that's just based on our expectation that testing's already going to be going on there. We talked with Grace and that's, that's probably going to be the, the easiest way it's going to be set up. And, you know, it's, it's possible, I suppose, at some point, depending on how long things go on. I mean, we might have to make adjustments to this policy, but for the foreseeable future, we expect the testing would occur there.
Okay. I also, thank you. I was also curious about just the, kind of the masking discussion part of, of the policy. The implication there was that if you are fully vaccinated, you don't need to mask. And is that where you see things moving here? It seems, with all the unknowns going on, it seems a little preemptive. But, um, but I think it's an important discussion, just, just like the school board had.
Right. So, so there is masking required of folks who are participating in the testing program. It does not speak to the need for folks who are vaccinated to, to wear a mask. You know, currently we have a policy that folks have to mask in county buildings. And I would expect us to keep that in place for the foreseeable future. Especially with Omicron being out in the community, we know it's much more transmissible. And we know that vaccines, while effective in preventing very serious COVID-19 and death, are, are not foolproof. And so I think the masking requirement for, for public facilities, for county buildings will stay in place for the foreseeable future, but it's not something that we're addressing in this policy.
Okay. Thank you. And, and then just as far as timing is concerned, to try to help navigate kind of that emergency action, that reaction versus delaying, you know, the need for it. Can you speak at all to, to the timing of things for us?
Yeah. Well, as I mentioned, so currently if the revised deadlines remain in place, we would have to meet most of the requirements of the ETS by January 10th. And then our testing program would have to be up and running by February 9th. The benefit of getting your approval of this policy today is it would eliminate the need for us possibly to have, say, a special meeting if, if this is upheld and we need to move forward quickly to get this in place. And, and I, the other thing I'll say, and I haven't said this explicitly, but from my perspective, this is kind of an exercise in reducing risk. The risk being if we don't have a policy in place, we could be subject to Minnesota OSHA penalties for not having, having a policy as required by law. So that's, that's the benefit of taking action on this today. It means that we do have an approved policy that we can plug and play if we reach a point where the Supreme Court upholds the ETS and we have to move forward.
Thank you. And I may have missed it. Is there, and I don't know why I would have missed it, but I didn't, I didn't see medical exemptions regarding, regarding vaccination.
There, there isn't one because effectively if people have a medical objection to the vaccination, they can participate in the testing program.
Oh, thank you.
Now, there, there is language, the requirement for new hires does speak to the fact that if, if somebody does have a religious or medical reason why they don't want to become vaccinated, at that point, we would consider an exemption. And that would be, you know, required by law.
Very good. Yes, another, another tricky, tricky aspect to navigate there.
So the exemption would be there, but would they have to do the testing every week?
Well, so I'm, I'm talking just about section six, which is the requirement for new hires. So, so the idea is under this policy, any new hires would have to vaccinate. They, they would not have the testing option.
Yeah, I, I don't like being put in this position, but I do think we need to be prepared. I greatly appreciate you explicitly stating both in our, in our packet as well as verbally here at this meeting that this will not be implemented unless we are legally required to. I do want to encourage all of our employees to get vaccinated, fully vaccinated. I am not thinking this is the best way to persuade people. Or, or if we, we necessarily should be persuading people. But I, I, I fully stand behind the guidance of public health and, and want to encourage that. But it's also important to, to have something in place if people choose not to. And so this is, this is putting it in writing and allowing us to, to navigate this as best we can. Further thoughts from commissioners? Please, Commissioner Hawkins?
Well, I do appreciate your work. I'm sorry that you had to do the work, but I appreciate that, that you have done what was necessary because we were told we have to do it. So we have it. I don't want to vote for it until I'm told by our Supreme Court, no, you have to. That's why I wanted to wait until our very first meeting in January, January 4th. And it still gives us six days. We implement it January 4th if we have to. And we still have six days to get people to attest to their vaccination status. And I'm kind of guessing it's, they're gonna, this is an issue across our country right now. So it's not just us dealing with this. And I'm, I'm just really disappointed that this has made another reason to think COVID is not real. Or it, that it's more of a political issue. And that's what, that's what is frustrating me. This has now become political and not related to what's the best for the health of our community. And I think it's just going to make some people dig in their heels even more, which I think is very sad. Because I do support the vaccinations. I encourage people to get vaccinated. I just don't think this is the way to do it. And so I, I'm going to be, have to be drug here to vote yes on this.
No, I, I, I respect that. I, um, I do want to point out on, on January 4th, it's, it's not a regular meeting of the Board.
And we can't make any business?
We can, we can call a special meeting for it, but again, I think, I think we're gonna have a pretty long meeting as it is on January 4th. So I, and I, I both personally and professionally want to avoid reactionary situations as much as possible. And, and, and it does not need to be unanimous vote. I would encourage it, but I don't, um, don't beat yourself up if, if you can't, if you can't. You know, one thing, I'm sorry, one, one more thing I wanted to bring up, that's gone through my mind as far as this is concerned, both with regional organizations or ours, that I think is very important to talk about. If someone opts not to get vaccinated and not to test, if they opt to leave the county, it's, it's a rough place to be in. I mean, I know it's a, the, the jobs are out there big time, but it's, it's a tough time for transition. And, um, and if you quit a job, unemployment, you're not eligible for unemployment. And that's often a way to help with transitions is unemployment insurance. And so, and that's, that's come up in some of my, my other regional meetings is, is people, you know, the great resignation's happening. Oftentimes, people have already found another job that they're moving into, but not always. And, and just that this, this whole unemployment thing has, has come up again. So another avenue to maybe muddy the waters, but auditor powers.
Oh, just curious if we do, what level of vaccination, OSHA, do they describe it in there?
For purposes of this policy, it only refers to the primary series of vaccinations. So boosters are not included.
One or two, depending on which.
Correct, correct.
That's considered for vaccine. And that may, that may change down the road. Um, Commissioner Sullivan, you had your, your hand up.
No, I was just ready to make a motion.
Okay, Commissioner Sullivan?
And, and saying this, not knowing the outcome of the litigation, Cook County needs to be prepared to implement our vaccination and testing program in the very near future in the event that the ETS is upheld and in order to avoid the risk of, of penalties from Minnesota OSHA. So given that, I respectfully would move to approve the county COVID-19 vaccination and testing policy.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. We have a motion. Is there support?
Swalson supports.
Thank you, Commissioner Swalson. We have a motion and support for the discussion. Just, we already had a lot of discussion and I just again want to thank everyone for the discussion. I think it's very important. It's not by any means an easy situation to be in. We're still in this pandemic, so it's not easy for anybody. And, uh, we need to be legal and prepared. Anyone else want to add anything else? I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same side. Thank you. The motion passes four to one. Thank you, Administrator Yorki and staff for working on that. And then we can move up again to item six, auditor. And we had switched things. I'm sorry.
Administrator updates.
Oh, touche. Oh, touche, Administrator Yorki.
I'm not done yet.
Yeah.
No, actually, I am done.
Yeah, it is a joke.
I'll keep going anyway. So a couple of things. Last week, you all approved, you authorized me to sign documents officially opting the county into participating in the state attorney general's opioid settlement. There was one document that was not appended to that agenda item that is separate from the two that were, and it is simply a memorandum of agreement with the state attorney general's office, which also needs to be signed and submitted. And in the interest of transparency, I emailed that to you prior to this meeting. We'll be posting that MOA on the agenda after the meeting. But I would like to request specifically your authorization to sign that MOA so that we can get this completed. I have already electronically signed the two agreements that were appended to the agenda last week. So those have been submitted, but I need to turn in this MOA as well. So I would request approval to take that action.
Thank you, Administrator Yorki. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I will motion to give approval for our county administrator to sign the memorandum of agreement with the Minnesota State Attorney General for the opioid settlement agreement.
Thank you, Commissioner Swalson. We have a motion. Is there support?
Starlee, support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starlee. Motion and support. Any further discussion? Been over this already, I feel like?
Well, yeah, okay, because this whole process got derailed at the federal level. So it was appealed, and I'm just wondering if we got any notice of what Minnesota's going to do now.
I've not received -- I mean, AMC has been very, very good about keeping us in the loop on all these developments related to the settlement, and I've not received anything.
I'm hoping that went also.
And I was wondering, was there only the one settlement? Because I read that as well, and I was like, oh, is that the?
That was challenged, or because there were two. There was one with the distributors, and then there was one with Jansen, which is also Johnson &amp; Johnson.
Well, then there was, I thought, a different one that was appealed. But maybe I'm getting things mixed up.
That's what, I just didn't know which one, if we were part of the one that got repealed or not. It doesn't really matter. We
Yeah, I suppose.
Just wondered if we knew.
Right, yeah. Good point. I did too.
Okay.
All right, all right. I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Next item, I just wanted to let the board know that, you know, we have three collective bargaining agreements that we're negotiating for a three-year period, '22 through 2024. We do have tentative agreement on one of those collective bargaining agreements. We're very close to tentative agreement on the second. And then we do have a follow-up meeting with our third union on January 4th that hopefully will get us close to, well, will bring us to an agreement so that we can bring these contracts forward and get them executed. That's something that has been taking up a fair amount of time, and I just want to thank Commissioners Mills and Swalson, who are working with me in those negotiating meetings. I feel like we've been a really effective team, and I'm really happy with the progress we've made. And I'm looking forward to getting these agreements nailed down. So. The next item I have, following up on something that Allison McIntyre mentioned earlier with a number of vacancies in her department, we continue to have a lot of turnover. I've spoken about this multiple occasions in the past. And we did have the listening sessions within the last month or two. And our next step is to take the information that we gathered from those listening sessions to the personnel committee, which was scheduled to meet this afternoon, but is now meeting after the first of the year. So I just wanted to, for the record, let folks know that we're not just sitting on that information. We are going to be taking it forward and using it to inform decisions about how we can better recruit and retain qualified staff. So just wanted to make you aware that that was going on. And then the last item that I had regards the organizational meeting on January 4th. Chairman Mills, you alluded to your expectation that it would be a long meeting, which organizational meetings frequently are. And I just wanted to get some feedback from the full board as to what steps, if any, we should be taking, myself and April, to prepare for that meeting to make it as expeditious as possible. The thing that is different this year from last is that we don't have any new commissioners. So I would think that would help us expedite things, but I don't know how much shuffling you all want to do. So if there's anything that we can do to help you all prepare for that conversation, I would like that direction.
Right now?
Not necessarily.
Thank you. Well, I think the simplest is, we go down our list, everything that we've been doing, and then each take a turn to say, you know, this doesn't work because I haven't met, or I'd like to trade, or maybe somebody else would like to be a part of that board or commission. And I think that's just the easiest.
Okay.
You know, just the one list, not everything that's five pages and 10 pages long. That can be part of the end result.
Okay. So organized by commissioner, in other words?
Yeah. I think that would work the best, you know, the best with everybody being on board now for the last year.
Okay.
Clarification, Commissioner. Are you looking for that list ahead of the January 4th meeting so it gives you time to review it?
Uh huh, right.
Thank you, April. Any other thoughts or requests from commissioners? To tell you, my dream is to have one calendar with all of our meetings on it. And then you can really get the visual of, you know,
Color-coded.
Where things fit. And, you know, I gotta own that not all of my meetings are on my calendar, and so that makes it very difficult. And I'm not the best at staying on that either. And so I'm not helping this at all. But that's my dream, is to be able to have that visual to help us all navigate that. And yeah, maybe it won't be that long of a meeting. It has, I think traditionally is a longer meeting. That's all we do, and it's kind of tedious and feels very long, regardless of the actual length. But yes, I think it will help to have, you know, have everyone on board and a better idea of what's on their plate and where room may or may not be. And I'll just try to, I'll try to update my calendar as best I can, too. It's also, I guess, a part of the challenge is not, you know, when different meetings are every other month or every three months, then you almost need a whole quarter's worth of calendars, and that gets really messy really fast, so.
And we can add the AMC part of it, too. I just went through my calendar and the district meetings and make sure that AMC conference, the first week of December, doesn't conflict with our TNT and, you know, that type of thing to look at ahead. Things change, but basically, we can have that ahead.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. I don't have more to add. Commissioner Sullivan?
I would like all of us as commissioners to also think about the fact that, starting in January of 2021, Commissioner Swalson was not yet with us. And so if we can
I got what was left.
Look at our assignments and make sure that we're being equitable, that we're each taking on about 20% of the meetings, that we are truly being equitable, ensuring our workload.
Yeah, I guess the other thought I had is, you know, this is where we kind of, we set the stage for the year. But we can, at any point, change it if we feel we need to. That's not something I'm the best at either, you know, recognizing and changing it mid-whatever you call it. But we can, so there's some reduction in pressure there. But I do appreciate, yeah, having a full board and having very active and engaged members, it's wonderful. I'm excited going forward. So I guess maybe that's -- any other requests or comments? Okay. Is that all for your updates?
That is all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Well, then we can move on to Item 5 in the agenda. And again, we switched things around a little bit. And so we're going to start with 5B, county commissioner salary and schedule of per diems.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we reviewed this last week, but just to say it again, Minnesota statutes require that commissioner's salary and schedule of per diem payments are not effective until January 1 of the next year, as set by resolution. So if there are any changes, we have to do that now. But even if there aren't going to be any changes, the state auditor recommends that we approve, whether it's the same salary or a different salary, same per diem, different per diem, that we do that by resolution, just to be transparent, I guess. So what I've done here is, you asked me to verify the cost of the 2.5% COLA that was in the proposed levy. So I did that, and it comes out to $3,012, and that includes taxes, any applicable taxes on that. And then I just, I took the liberty of preparing a resolution in case you considered making a change for a COLA, just one-year COLA, knowing there has to be a longer discussion, if you want to look at the long term, since you had a cost of living. So the resolution just states that here's your current salaries by position, and now therefore be it resolved that commissioner's salaries for 2022 will increase by a cost of living equal to that as may be approved for other elected officials for 2022. And then this is just assuming per diems shall remain at $100 for 2022. And just to point out, saying the, I didn't put the schedule in here, but the schedule of per diems is that schedule that you all have for your meetings for each one of the commissioners, and that's in the per diem policy. So that's what that $100 applies to.
All right. You know, what's funny is, in my mind, a significant part of this discussion also has to do with the other item, Item 5A, as far as timing is concerned in that. And I'm just curious where commissioners are at as far as their thought process along Commissioner Swalson?
Well, I really appreciated getting the information that our county administrator presented to us, you know, or sent along to us from the study that, or information provided through our Minnesota County, you know, association. That was helpful for me when I looked through that and I see, and I look at, you know, the populations of the counties and, you know, what the wages are for the commissioners and the per diems and this type of thing. And it gave me a different perspective, quite frankly, because it's easy to say, well, we haven't had any kind of a pay adjustment in any way, shape, or form, you know, for this long period of time. But then, looking at the facts and seeing where we stand on that, we actually stand in a pretty good spot, you know, from our pay perspective. And you had mentioned, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, you thought our per diem was actually at, you know, a higher level. And in fact, it is. So when you do them, because they are, you know, it's a package situation, it did look to me like we're fairly compensated when you look at the overall population base right now, when you look at where we are on that, in comparison to the other counties that provided the information. And I think that was a little, at least for this person, that was a little surprising. Because I guess in my mind, when you go that long without any kind of a change in the pay, you would think that you had been lagging behind, you know, by a substantial amount. But it didn't seem to appear that way, anyway, in the data.
Well, the, yes, that, through my anecdotal conversations at AMC, that's where I understood things as well. It's just that the other counties haven't updated in 30 years. No, that's a, that was a joke. But that's kind of like, when we make those comparisons, you kind of got to get the more, the more of that. And so I don't want to trash-talk anyone.
No.
But
You're sharing information, is all we're doing.
Yeah. What I am most impressed with is Cook County. When we go to AMC conferences, our representation at the AMC conferences, I am most impressed with our board and the way we look at things. We can look ahead, we can try to anticipate. We have strong leadership, and that's not something I see necessarily statewide. And those are the leaders. Those are those counties' community leaders. And so I think there needs to be real reform in those other counties, but that's not our place, right? That's not our job. All we can determine is what we are setting our county up for. And so it's just a continual, you know, mind game of what, how to navigate that, what comes first, where should we be, what do we compare to. Sometimes, I often get comments that we should be running Cook County as a business, you know? The budget should be like a business. Well, what does a board of, you know, a $30 million business, what does the board receive in compensation, if that was the case, you know? And it's, that's beyond my experience. I don't know. But I'm guessing it's more than the $23,000. I could be wrong. Maybe I don't understand private boards all that well. So that's, all those thoughts go through my mind. But yes, based on that comparison, we are
Yeah.
Per population, in a very good place, yeah.
And if I could add, though, I still look at our salaries as something that are a stagnant component of our government right now. And I don't think that's a healthy way to run your government. I do believe, just as we do with our other elected officials, they automatically enjoy the COLA that goes along. And so therefore, you have people that are looking up to go into those positions. Now, the difference, of course, is that those are full-time positions, right? And these are considered to be a part-time position. But I don't believe that part-time position excludes the, you know, the process of getting the cost of living adjustment along the way.
Mm-hmm.
And I worry most, not about my own compensation, quite frankly, but I worry most about keeping the salary so that it attracts talent to come into those positions.
Exactly, yeah. Commissioner Starlee?
Thank you. Yes, I too. And I looked over this, 87 counties, of per diem to population, salary. You know, I think we're right in there with the per diem and then with our mileage. Seems to be, you know, about fair in terms of the whole state. I do think that a lot of it depends on how many boards and commissions we're on, too. So that reflects back into January of a long list or a partial list, because therefore, you know, that is part of the salary then, attending those. So, but yeah, this was very revealing as of 2021.
I really support the idea of a cost of living, but I would like to, in 2022, look at our pay and compensation through the lens with which we're examining all our positions in the county, through HR and through that process, to see where we lie. You know, do a time study, look at the responsibilities, and see how that would shake out. I just think that would be valuable information for us and for the public. I just think that would be valuable information for us and for the public.
Yeah. I, uh, yeah, I fully, I think I've said this on the radio, that I fully intended to keep a diligent time record of, and that, that went out the window real quick, both with losing an administrator, finding an administrator, and, and the pandemic, you know, that, let alone all the others, meetings or whatever, you know? So, again, that's a dream with, to go along with that quarterly calendar.
It's an aspiration.
Yeah, yeah. So, it could still happen for me, but I think that would be very valuable, a time study. I do, I do, originally, I was like, yes, when we do a comp study, we should include commissioners. Well, they're going to compare it to the other counties commissioner, and we already know how we compare there. So, then I'm like, well, what does that really demonstrate? Like, I, I just question that. But, I don't know, I, I get the impression that we're all, um, on board with some kind of cost of living increase. And, and maybe that's a little presumptive on my part, but, um, and where, and, and where my mind goes, is that, well, if we're okay with that, is that a regular thing, or is this a one-time thing? And if it's a regular thing, why don't we correct from 2003? And, and that's where there's a big leap. That's a, that's a big leap. And I, I don't anticipate getting majority support here, but I want you to at least think about my logic, because that's what's going to be going potentially forward. And, and that's, it's just, and, and so I would just ask, why not backward? Especially, and it's a genuine question. Please.
And I'm, my, my thought on that is, if it was intended to be there in the past, they would have put it in place. We shouldn't question the, the decision-making prior. My view is, we look at today and we make adjustments today. If we really think that, because that would substantially change the pay...
Yes.
...that we look at today.
Yes.
And if you look at our comparison to the other counties, I would tell you, it would not be warranted. That, that's just looking at the data. But I do believe, as I stated earlier, for the reasons of going forward, trying to keep this a competitive position, you know, something that would attract talent, that type of thing, that's why I, I look at that from a perspective of a cost of living going forward. However, as, you know, Brady has pointed out to us, this is something that is decided on a year-by-year basis. So, we may say, yes, we think a cost of living adjustment is appropriate, and we put that in place. Next year, we'll be having the same conversation. And with, next year, we can decide that. And depending on what fiscal, you know, condition is of the county and where we're at overall and what challenges we're facing, we may or may not decide to continue to carry that forward. Or we may, in fact, decide based on other information that a pay change to the base salary is needed. I think we have all those options. So, I don't, I don't know that you need to make it that onerous today, you know, because as Commissioner Sullivan said, if you decide to include it with the pay survey, then you'll have additional data from that. Although I, I agree, I think we'll have the data we have already.
Right.
But, and I look at it, I'm, I'm kind of a one-step-at-a-time...
Sure.
...type of thing. And that's why I was focused on the COLA today, and then, you know, downstream, we can look at the others.
Yep. And, um, and I guess just following the logic, a COLA, if you, a COLA increase, based on the comparisons of other counties, a COLA increase for us today is not warranted either. And so, what I'm saying is, comparing ourselves to other counties is not appropriate. And so, it makes it very difficult to say, what is appropriate? And, uh...
Mr. Chairman, the, the information that we got from AMC is self-reported information. It's not been quality assured. We don't know anything about, as you said, how, you know, how long have those salaries been in place and so on. And so I would caution against taking those numbers too much to heart.
I understand.
Yeah.
But it gives you, it gives, it gives you a range anyway. And that's really what I was looking at. I don't look at the right, you know, I look more in magnitudes than I do in, you know, exact numbers on there.
One of, one of the other ways I've looked at this is, how much time, again, I haven't quantified it diligently, and that's my bad, so, but just trying to wrestle with it. How much time does this job take, and what kind of compensation is there versus working a full-time job as a house painter, and how much compensation is, is given that? And, um, and I can very comfortably say that working as a house painter, which is not, I guess you could argue it's maybe skilled or unskilled labor, uh, pays better. And that really, that really makes me question the appropriateness level of pay here. Some of the social media posts I read were also about, I want somebody to be able to, well, you know, just a minimum wage job, commissioner needs to be able to make more than a minimum wage job. And minimum wage in Cook County is, is not necessarily a set thing, but I know there's a very strong pressure on it. And, um, and I know some restaurant workers who are definitely making more than, than county commissioners for, for arguably more time maybe, but we have flexibility here. So, there's just all these factors that make it really difficult. And the thing that really gets me is it will never be an easy decision. It will never be, it can be less difficult, but a huge factor in, in my mind is also the budgetary pressures. Because when you're in a hard spot with the budget, it's going to be even more difficult. And so, right now, we're not in a hard spot with the budget. We always want to keep it down, but this is one of the easier budgets, I feel like, that I've been a part of, and much thanks to Mr. Yorki and, and our staff for, for, you know, and, and previous boards, Commissioner Starley, for, for getting us into this pretty level place. So, there's all that. And it's, I know it's going to be an ongoing conversation, but that's a lot of my thoughts. There we go.
There we go.
Now, are we done? Is that...
Can I make a motion?
I will make the motion to approve this resolution as presented by our auditor, that includes a COLA increase, or I mean, a cost of living equal to what other elected county officials of 2022 will get.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion, is there support?
Sullivan supports.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan, for the discussion. I've got more on my mind. Surprise, surprise. One of the things I try to advocate in our labor negotiations is using a longer-term average for COLA adjustments, working off a longer-term CPI, and particularly the 10-year CPI. And I like that quite a lot. What I learned in mediation is, nobody does that. And that doesn't scare me. I, I want to lead with that, um, and, uh, and, and think that, I, I have a hard time expecting other people to do it if that's not how leadership is doing it. So, that's just one further thought, but it, it's a, a more difficult, maybe number to figure than just whatever, you know, the COLA is. So, maybe that can be for next year, but just a thought out there. Don't need to turn the apple cart over as Commissioner Stolson says often.
You did not reference apples at any point.
Oh, it wasn't just a cart. Uh, Christopher Starley.
Thank you. So, because we're going to go into the levy, what does the cost of living increase, how much it, does that come to, Brady? Have you...
Uh, two and a half percent, it's $3,012.
$3,000?
And $12, yeah.
Total for the five of us.
And this would be the cost of living that we would look at for '22, to be revisited a year from now? Okay.
Yep, that's correct.
Yeah. And the, the way the resolution is stated, it would be whatever the negotiations turn out to be and the final offer to all elected officials.
Okay.
So, it could be slightly different. I wouldn't expect much difference.
Thank you.
Oh, for reference, last year, the 10-year average CPI was 2.65%. This last year has been an anomaly with CPI. I haven't calculated what that 10-year, but it would bring it up from that, so, just for perspective here. We have a motion and support. We've had some discussion, anything else? And I'll call the vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Board. Thank you, Brady. And moving on to item five A, the 2022 county budget and levy.
I'm sorry, could we take a five minute break?
Yeah. Oh, let's take a five-minute break. Not at all.
This might take a while. And I know everybody else here in TV land is just waiting with bated breath, but...
Right where we want him.
Is, was Tim coming back in?
Oh, we better call him.
Yeah.
Oh, my.
It's a great idea. Yeah, anytime, anytime you need it, that's...
Better plug in.
That's all it goes.
Oh, yeah.
But I forgot it.
So, so you can't make a statement on effectiveness yet.
I just want to get a whole car cover.
It's called a garage.
Yeah, that's what I really, well, I've got like three of those, but cars don't fit in them. That's where you put your others. Every time I want to do, every time I want to work on a vehicle, okay, step one, clean the garage.
Let's get down and do this.
This is the fun part.
That's right.
What we've all been waiting for. Brady's going to speak up.
Oh, yeah. Could you hear him well? I can turn it up more.
I think I leaned in on that last one. You're going to be like that guy in the center ring there, pretending... I remember one of the first times we had these, and somebody, and I was in the middle, and somebody asked me to speak up, and I grabbed this and I started talking into it. It got a big, it got a big laugh.
I'm sure it did.
Sorry for holding up the show.
Speaking of apples, huh?
I don't have a cart.
Well, no one can tip it over. It works out great. Uh, we're back, um, and we're on to item five A, the 2022 county budget and levy. This is under the auditors section. Anything you'd like to say, Brady?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, just preface with our, our proposed budget and levy, as you recall, was a 4.5% increase. And since then, we've made a few changes. Most of them you're well aware of, especially with the Human Services Department. So, if, if... So, if, if you'll look down below, I detailed some of the general fund changes last week. Most of those are to my own department. Some expense reduction for the audit and some increases for the cyber insurance and for MNCCC and, and some small revenue increases. And then for public health, human services, the ARPA money and the other health grant that they received. And then the other pilot program, revenue expense. And then I added 20,000 to the contingency. And that was for our discussions on commissioner's salary and the GSA rates with those potential costs are. So you may decide that's a little on the high side, but, so that's, that all is in there at this time. Down the, the side on the far right, you can see the general fund is, is up 5.48%. Highway up 3.21. And with these revenue sources, human services is down over 12%. Airport is slightly down. And bottom line is, our proposed levy, if you approve this version here, would be 2.206. Uh, down from four and a half percent. And just if you remember with our, um, increase in valuation, uh, that 4.5 for, uh, an average property with no change in class, no change in value, was going to see about a 2% increase on our four and a half percent levy. So, uh, we were in a good position to begin with. Now we're in a really good position, let's say, for the average taxpayer. Of course, the variations we know are great with, um, with evaluations, with the, uh, you know, different areas of the county and with the fiscal disparity this year and so on. But, uh, overall, we're in a very good position. Um, but don't look for this again next year, I would caution. You know, human services is not going to, likely to get that same kind of help with some of their costs next year, so. And I guess I'll leave it for discussion at that.
Thank you. Audrey Powers, any questions, comments, thoughts from commissioners?
I'd just like to say thank you to Brady and to our administrator for working on this and really taking the time to be sure of your numbers and in making those adjustments as you felt were necessary or appropriate. So, I appreciate that we went from 4.5 to 2.2. And I'm wondering, I just wondering how confident you feel in your contingency fund of 82? Or in all these numbers? Is there any area that you say, ooh, that's, that's pretty risky there?
No. No, you can't forecast the future, but I think we've, we've covered what we know. That contingency, the additional contingency might be a little strong, but it's not bad.
Be in that spot.
Yeah. And we don't know the other, uh, we've got two unions to go, well, three to be approved and two to go. So, it's, it's pretty minor and, uh, yeah, you might just let it ride.
Well, thank you for your work on this. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Starley?
Yeah. I too thank you. When I suggested 4.5, there was just so much unknowns and there still is to some degree. But, um, I appreciate your work in the numbers and looking how things are going to be for one year. I appreciate that. Thank you.
You know, the one, the one unknown you can't forecast in here would be, you know, inflation. You know, they, they've been forecasting that it's going to be short-term and, uh, I guess one thing in the favor is they've, the Fed is declared they're going to take action, at least they're going to reduce or increase rates at least three times next year. They've already stated it. So, they want to get it under control, obviously.
One, one thought, and this won't surprise any of you. I think I've expressed it before. I like averages. I feel like we can stay more level longer if we focus on averages. And so, this is below average. This is below a 30-year average. A 30-year average, I think, is three and a half or 3.6 or something like...
Well, if you, the steady rate, just year to year to year, to get to this levy is about, is over four, 4.3. But that, that puts more money, that would add up to more money because we were down for years and then up. So the average comes, uh, 4.3. And then, uh, the other long-term average is what gets us to the same, you know, amount of money.
Yeah. What do you call that term?
And that's, and that's if you, that's around that three and a half percent.
Yeah. Does that have a name, though? That, that kind of term?
I don't.
Because that's what I like the most.
Yeah.
We don't need to, we don't need to get more money. We just need to get to here.
Because that assumes you're, you're using your money wisely. And if you, um, even if, let's say you collected more in some year, 10 years ago, but you use it just as wisely as you did today, maybe you save it if you didn't need it, you use it if you, you know, you get to the same place. And maybe you'd do better because you would take care of some issues that are more costly when you let them go. So, hopefully you're better off with that long-term average.
Where I'm going with that is this is below that. And there's some one-time funds that we're using and, and we're using the fund balance. That's significant. Um, both, both of those things combined especially so. And so, yes, sure like this number, but what about next year? It's, 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 uh, hard to know, but I'm gonna guess it's, it's, it's gonna be, uh, a lot less agreeable to everybody. But we don't have anything really for next year. And there's a lot of unknowns, both the pandemic as well as many other, other factors. We're really trying to, to get our unknowns with labor, uh, narrowed down and, uh, and then defined. And that'll, that'll help a lot. But I, you know, I suspect those are gonna be, um, all, all of those factors combined, I think is gonna be, uh, I think the term is upward pressure. So, um, clearly, uh, we can come down from 4.5. And that's always the hope. When we set the preliminary, we, that, we cannot go higher. We can only go lower. And we almost always want to go lower. Um, and now this is well below that, um, whatever you call average. And that makes me nervous. And people are going to say you're ridiculous for that if you're not, you know, grabbing onto the savings and running. But I'm just trying to think of years down the road. So, um, one of the other big contingencies, maybe contingency is the wrong word because it's in the, in the bu, 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 in the budget, but just capital expenses is this tennis courts. And I, I know there's assumptions built into that conversation, um, that I'm not sure will realize. So there's that, that risk. I don't know that we can put a dollar amount there, but Commissioner Hawkins, you had your, your hand up.
Yeah, go ahead and finish though.
Oh, I never, it's never over, right? Until we vote.
Well, I would just wanted to remind you, um, that the previous year, the highway had a million dollars extra in their fund balance. Public health had a million dollars extra in their fund balance. The general fund had extra to put into the fund balance. Because, you know, was it because our expenses were lower? We over-budgeted expenses and were the more, but there was that factor.
Yeah.
It wasn't needed.
Yep.
So, I think this budget is more in line with maybe what, we haven't seen the final fourth quarter report yet from the auditor's office to know how close we are this year.
Mm-hmm. That's a great point.
So, when you say you're worried about not matching that dollar amount? Well, we took too much before.
Well, just last year and the year before. But that's why I said a 30-year. When you look at a 30-year, that's where I'm like, okay, well, that's, that's my target, right, is the, the long haul here.
And I am all for long-range plans, you know?
Yes.
And so, I see highway, well, yeah, they're using some of their fund balance out of that million. Yeah, they're going to use $450,000. Okay. Uh, but they're still having an increase of $75,000. Okay. But you, part of what makes me more comfortable with this is they have a 10-year plan, five-year plan, 10-year plan. We know what they're going to do with their money. Um, so I, that's where I just keep saying, I would love for us to come up with a long-range capital improvement plan, maintenance plan, and put dollar figures to it, use our financial management plan that we have, lay it out there and prove why we need the taxpayers' money. I, I really have a hard time, and I think especially now with inflation. And I know there's lots of people out there doing just fine. And they gave $17,000 this morning to public health. Thank you very much. But there are other people struggling. We had, I mean, it's like one-third of our households are struggling very hard here. And I'm just think it's not quite fair to take their money because we might need it someday. I'm all for setting a levy that's fair and balanced and we can prove where we're going to use it. But that's why I appreciate that this has been pared down. And I get, it might not be this, it most likely won't be this low next year. But I, I want to make sure that we are setting a fair levy amount. And it's not based that we just want, we just want to have it in our bank. So, that's my little spiel.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I just, um, I, uh, I think the reason we can buck the 30-year average is because we got some one-time monies. And, um, and when we go, when we go below that 30-year average, it just, it just worries me. I hear what you're saying. We don't need to unnecessarily take people's money and put it away for the, for the if-maybes. But, um, but to say that we're beating the 30-year average consecutively, I mean, I had a similar conversation and similar tone last, last year. And we set this. I was like, whoa, I'm not comfortable with going below this. And, um, and I, I guess I just carry that with me. Um, but to your point, there were surpluses that could be, could be utilized here. Um, I just don't know how long we can count on that. And, and when it gets real hard, it's going to be real hard to, to approve a 7%, you know? Like, that's, that's not, that's not somewhere I want to go. And, uh, and that's a number I pulled out of thin air, but it's just something that I could see those kinds of adjustments. If we're below the 30-year by this much, I could see us going up by that much above the 30-year, so.
Yeah, health insurance is not likely to drop.
Yeah.
Uh, 9.3% again for 2023.
Right, right. Except for a point, you know, if people, if, maybe not that much, but 5%.
Universal healthcare?
Well, it might go down 5% if, you know, it, I, I feel like people are still not fully utilizing their healthcare because of the pandemic. And so, we could have another year of that. Um, but it won't be that nine because that was, half of that was just the switch over or whatever, so. Yep, so many factors here.
Listening to MCAT talk about the reinsurance rates, which is, those are the big claims that, uh, you know, we're self-insured all these counties under MCAT, in, in a sense. But the big claims, they offload to a reinsurance company for like the million-dollar and higher claims that hit. And those prices are going way up, um, because of a lot of factors. But, I said, the valuation of our, this year, our building insurance costs went up because of, uh, the, the valuations have increased. And that might be some inflation, uh, and people are building a lot. But anyway, those, but there are other reasons they're going up too because of, you know, climate change, damage, things like that that come into, come into play.
And so when we had, um, the financial planning done, my memory, and I wasn't involved with that. I just tried to pick up on it. My memory is that what Eller said is you'll have to budget three, was it three to 5% every year? Or?
We were...
What was those, what was those parameters or the?
We had set, it was four something. But that was, that had building projects every few years for replacing most of our major structures. Or now we're looking, you know, we may have some of that, but we're looking to, what does it take to maintain what we have?
Yep.
Because sometimes in that discussion, you decide that that's too much and it's cheaper to replace.
Yeah.
You know, if that's where you come up to it. But at, at least then you know, based on what you found.
If, if you, if you were going to add something to it, I would, the place you could justify it, I think, would be the capital reserve. If we do get that, you get a plan done next year.
Yeah, it's really hard to put, I think as Commissioner Hawkins said, or alluded to, it's really hard to put it into the departments that are spending out of fund balance. And we already know that they had extra, you know? But I do see the capital as, and I do see some more contingency possibility. And you know, dare I, dare I even say it, but you know, if there's, you know, your talk of MCAT claims triggered something in, in my mind as far as where our costs are coming from and if there are any significant ones in this past year that, uh, would affect things. But I think that's more fund balance talk than budgeting, per se.
We could hope for a PILT settlement.
Right. And that...
I don't think we can budget based on hope.
I think, yeah, that's hard to budget for, but I also think it'll go in our favor too. So that's, that's a part of it. It's all a part of it. But, um, all right.
So I've tried to look at, you know, the difference between that long-term average and looking at that 2.2069% so that we can come to the middle, a compromise, looking at addressing our potential insurance costs, negotiations, inflation, all of those pieces. And I came up with a 3.2. Looking at then that 3.2 and putting money back into capital and contingency. What are thoughts of the other commissioners?
Well, I, um, it's hard for, it's hard, part of what I wrestle with is like, that's where I want to go, is that type of thinking. But then it's hard to, as Commissioner Hawkins pointed out, it's hard to justify taking money without the needs clearly defined. But I know that the needs are coming, you know, it's with the capital especially. But we don't have that long-term capital plan in place. And so, it's, that's where I wrestle with it. But I feel that is much closer to what I am comfortable with is that, that line of thinking. But, um, but that's me. And I, I would love to hear from other commissioners too.
I was willing to go to 2.5.
And how, what was, can you help, help me, follow, lead me along?
Because Brady was confident in his 2.2. I know he's very conservative on a budget. I felt pretty confident in this budget. But I do know that there are things we're going to have to spend money on this year that maybe I'm not positive or reflected in this budget. So, I was willing to go 2.5. And let's make sure we're on track of... let's make sure we're on track of making sure that the departments have been budgeting this year and don't come to us saying, oh, I forgot to, I have a piece of equipment that needs to be replaced. No, I forgot to budget for it. That's how we need to say, well, I'm sorry, you're going to have to save it for next year.
Well, that is how it works.
Yeah. Well, we did approve some others out of fund balance this year. I think for the most part, the department heads do a great job in terms of visualizing, you know, they've come to us, the highway department, and public health is working with ups and downs and all kinds of staff situations. I don't know. I'm kind of, I'm going to throw out three. I'm just a little, I'm just so leery about something unforeseen. I mean, we were talking about COVID, and we're talking about other maybe funds for that, but I've just, I don't know. So I'll throw all three.
So what I'm hearing is three-point-two, three, and two-point-five, um, going up from the two-point-two. And, um, so I'm sorry to go on and on about averages, but so the three-point-six-thirty-year average, what that means is there's zeros, there's zeros, there's ones, there's ones, and then there's big ones, you know, and so the, that's why my rationale is the closer we can keep it to that, the less we're going to have big spikes to have to make up for the the shortages. And we can't identify those shortages or spikes necessarily ahead of time. I don't think the previous board said like, well, next, you know, it's just, it's all in, this all of this average talk is in hindsight, but trying to ride that, that, uh, that projection is is kind of where where I get my rationale from. But again, it's not defined. It's not like, I can't, I can't say, well, we're going to carry this average into, well, into the future. The average could change or whatever, but that's just my, the historical perspective is what is giving me the most comfort, so. Um, and I appreciate you explaining the difference.
Yeah.
That's, that's a good, it's a good compromise, and, and I appreciate your your movement as well, um, not literal, your, uh, your increase as well as yours, Commissioner Starley, because you of all of us have have the most perspective here as as commissioners and and experience with with setting the levies, and and you've gone through some very difficult times, so, um, so I appreciate your perspective. Thoughts, Commissioner Solson? I see you thinking, for sure.
Yeah. Well, and and I also, I I also tend to defer to Commissioner Starley with the long-term view and having gone through and had to, um, make those hard choices because of past decisions. I don't want to put this board in that position going forward either, and and I'm inclined to go to that three percent only because I agree with, um, the statement that the Fed had, that the, you know, they have the view of inflation. They have decided, in fact, that it's not short-term. They've decided they're going to have to take action sooner. I think their actions will have an effect, but I don't think it will turn that corner before the end of this coming year.
Mm-hmm.
In other words, I think in twenty-twenty-two, we'll see real inflation.
Mm-hmm.
That equates to real cost increases.
Mm-hmm.
And so I, that's why I would be inclined to go more towards that three percent to, it's difficult to quantify, but all we're seeing is month-over-month increases in those numbers right now. So the number, or the things they do will have an effect and will start to hopefully to tamp that down. Um, otherwise, you know, next year could be very difficult, and those are real costs that you got to pay every day, and that's why I'm looking at more. We baked in what we have. We put some contingency funds, which I think are fantastic in there, but I still think it's prudent to go up to that three percent. Um, it doesn't get you to the long-term average, but I think it's just more prudent than being at too low a number and then going back and questioning yourself why you're digging a hole next year versus covering costs. So if mine is taking into effect what I what I believe is coming, no. I mean, this is always valuable, and and I, I mean, I can't tell you how proud I am of the hard work to get that number to where it is.
Yeah.
But with the real, the reality of inflation coming in the way it's in right now, looking at that, I just think it's prudent that we put something in this budget that doesn't hamstring our ability to do business this next year.
Mm-hmm.
And with your thought of the overall average, I don't want to stray too far from that. We've seen the consequences. They're real, and history proves it out every single time.
Yeah, when, when, when I see a, yeah, I think I already said this, when I see a deviation from the average, like say the, say three percent, I assume we're going to see a four percent next year, just to, you know.
And I want to capture some of these savings from what we've, all the hard work put in, but not so much that it causes us to jump up to that high end, you know, again, and knowing for just being very cognizant that next year, we're not going to see the savings as far as those deep discounts because there were added discounts this year, right, for our our health insurance because of making the change in this type of thing, and those aren't going to be there, so.
My fear is next year, it's going to hurt, and we're going to be like, well, why didn't we see this coming?
Well, that's always the case.
Yeah, yeah.
It's always a possibility.
Yep.
But we're going to get the PILT.
But, uh, but but that, yes.
And if we do, we will be, we will be in a party mood, but.
Yes.
No.
Don't count your chickens.
No, me.
I'm just saying, if if it does come in our way, and and that money that's been set aside is now set free to be able to utilize in, you know, in our planning processes and things, that would be really fantastic, but I don't see that as, you know, I don't count that one at all.
It's not sure enough.
I think, I think that Brady's doing a fantastic job of holding that in reserve throughout because the real reality is at least part of that could go back. So how do we find a number we can all agree on?
Yeah. Well, we've, we've thrown out three different numbers. And, uh, and so far, I've heard two pay people say three, so there's some strength there. It might be the strongest thus far. What is there any way on the fly we can calculate our one-time savings this year? Whether that be grants, health insurance, just to give a further perspective, is that, uh, is that, is that kind of silly to tell eleven hour and fifty, actually, we're past the eleven hour, we're at the one o'clock hour?
Well, we were, I mean, you, you were sitting at, uh, the four-point-five had quite some contingencies in there as well. But was that number be, that number was before?
Before the grant, yeah.
And then, of course, Brady, you know, did some, did some hard math in his own department as well that we benefited from.
Yeah, we saved, uh, three hundred and twenty-three thousand on the health insurance.
Yes, tremendous.
With the nine-point-three percent cut. So if that, hope it doesn't go up nine-point-three percent from this number.
Well, we factored in ten percent initially.
Yeah.
Right, when we were coming into the year. So that's why I say that change was so dramatic because you went from a positive ten percent to the.
If Human Services goes back, their twenty-twenty-one levy was two million five. And right now, they're at two million, uh, where is it?
Two-two? Oh, that was the initial. One side of that.
Two-two, yes.
Yeah, two-two. So, so I just ask us, do we see any additional costs coming to public health in the, in the near term? Just the near, the, 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 the near long term, rather. Do we see mental health, behavioral health? Do we see those things coming? And, you know, they're not always able to budget for that bigger. They're just budgeting year by year, and so, and there is significant fund balance. So is that enough of a cushion to help us navigate all this away from that average?
Yeah.
This is where the rubber hits the road, I guess.
And I asked them to crystal ball this morning, and they just, uh, I said, soon COVID goes away, it's a normal year. They said, well, just look back on the last couple of levies and and add your costs, living to, uh, employment. And that's about as best a guess as they can give us, which is, they don't see anything other than that at this moment, so.
Chair, please.
Question, did we, did we factor anything into the contingencies for the what ifs if we were to see our Wade study come back that we needed to adjust in an upward direction?
No.
No.
That's the thought.
That's the strong.
If you're going to, if you're going to do the, do the study, you should be somewhat prepared to to make adjustments.
Well, and kind of our anecdotal union talks gives us some idea.
Yeah, it's, well, it's perspective, um, you know, from, from their view of where they see themselves in discussions with their peers in other areas, which, again, we know is difficult because all counties are not created the same, right? So it depends on who you're discussing it with, but, um, but, but I just, it's something to have in mind. If you go with the strict two-point-two, then you're not giving yourself something to work with, you know, and I, I think we're doing the Wade study because in our hearts, we want to make sure that we're fairly compensating all of the employees in the county, and, you know, we're using that as a hedge as well to try to stem people feeling dissatisfied with their compensation and seeking out employment somewhere else. You know? And I want to make sure that, do the study, do it, you know, make sure you're, you're getting a good representative view of it, and if it says we need to adjust some salaries across the various work groups, that we're prepared to do that. And I'd rather do it without taking it out of the, you know, the reserve, but.
Well, yeah.
I'm going to come back to that, the three-point-two is a point of compromise.
Yeah. I'm feeling stronger about it, actually.
Since we just did it a few years ago, you would hope.
If we factor in, I also just want to recognize, we budgeted for an HRA. This is huge. This is, this is wonderful.
Yeah.
And to do that and have it at a bare minimum at two-point-two, that's just incredible. I do anticipate further costs there as well, but we have ARPA hopefully to lean on. Hopefully, that won't get too diminished with our other testing needs. But I just, the the discounts that we've received this year, um, it's, it's just really hard for me to just accept them and and take it as reality. I just think of that as a windfall that we, we can't really, um, hardly, hard, I mean, we have, we clearly, if, if we want to benefit the taxpayers, but I'm really trying to keep that trajectory.
Just to give you some perspective, a, a two-and-a-half percent would add about thirty-one thousand to the levy. A three-and-a-half would add to what we have right now showing here. Three-and-a-half would add about, um, a hundred, uh, well, no. Yeah, about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
And what does a three do?
Three is, is going to add about ninety, ninety-five, uh, eighty-five thousand, sorry.
And a three-point-two?
That's going to add about a hundred and six thousand. So when you, you compare what you're likely to get with Human Services, two or three hundred thousand without those additional revenues.
Yep.
Some health insurance increases.
It's not a lot.
No. Yeah, if we, if we're, if we do a thought exercise and the current PHHS is two-point-two, and the twenty-twenty-one was two-point-five, and we can, for a thought exercise, assume that it's going to be a two-point-five again without these windfalls. It doesn't, it doesn't quite get us there, um, even getting at the three-point-two. So that's, I guess that's maybe the simplest way to illustrate my concern deviating from the average, but.
I'm sorry, can you say that one more time? I kind of got lost.
So the twenty-twenty-two PHHS is two-point-two million.
Okay, yeah, all right.
The twenty-twenty-one was two-point-five million. And the reason, a strong reason, uh, significant reason for the two-point-two of this year is those windfalls and grants and, um, does that make sense?
Uh, well.
Health insurance as well?
Yes, I get, I get part of the reason, but I think it's also just making sure that we, because I don't think we all, there were, um, revenues that were coming in yearly that were not reflected in previous budgets regularly. Because we didn't know if we were going to get them, so they didn't put it, that revenue. But it was a yearly revenue source, and that's, I think, part of the reason why we got to a million-dollar overage in last year. I think that's part of the reason. So seeing it reduced a little bit here, part of it is accounting for revenues we've always received, part of it is reduction in health insur, I think it's a mixture of, of things.
But I guess where I'm going is, in, in twenty-twenty-three, my assumption, which for the thought exercise is again, two-point-five. And so, and what you're saying is you're not, you're not seeing that because of the the revenues that were not reported as.
Well, that's, it'll be interesting to see the final year report if you looked at what we got this morning. Our revenues.
That's a good point.
And our expenses were not at eleven-year or eleven-month percentages.
Sure.
They were lower than that.
Yeah.
Now, we don't know the reason for that yet, and there's still, we won't know for a while, but that gives me more confidence when I looked at that saying, hmm, well, I think we're on track. You're right.
Oh, right now?
Yeah.
Oh.
That we don't, we're not going to have, I don't know. We'll have to wait and see for the final figures, but.
Yeah.
I can't remember. I mean, was one, one department was like sixty-eight percent, and another, the revenues were, you know, we were still waiting for something to come in, but as far as the expenses went, they were not close to be all being used up. So it made me think, okay, well, that was a conservative budgeting, and I, it makes me feel confident in this one, then.
Um, well, I guess where I was going with that is that's a difference of three hundred thousand, and what we're talking about, um, going from the two-point-two to, uh, the one example was three-point-two, um, was a hundred thousand, a hundred and six thousand. And so, um, it doesn't quite get us there if that assumption followed through. Not saying that it will, but even a smaller assumption of, of those windfalls not coming through, I think, will will not quite meet that, um, with that a hundred thousand. And I don't know if I'm making any sense, but, but that's, again, what's going through, going through my brain, um, trying to anticipate two years out. We should do five-year budgets, you know?
I think we should.
There's so many, but, I mean, shoot, talk about a challenge there, too.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to note, I got a message from Lori Erickson up in PHHS, and she said that expenses for twenty-twenty-one will continue to be paid through February, and revenue will continue to be accepted, um, through March for twenty-twenty-one. and revenue will continue to be accepted through March for twenty twenty-one, so.
Yeah, so we don't, we won't know for a while.
That's always the way it works. Yeah, that's, you just have to make your best guess, estimate, you know? And, and that's what they do, and when they're setting their budgets as well, so, yeah.
Did you, and Brady, in your conversation with the crystal ball, was it about twenty nineteen? Is that what you had said?
She just said, look prior to to COVID.
Right.
You know, just, you know, a normal budget.
Right.
That's as near as you can get. Probably the twenty twenty budget, because we know about COVID.
Okay, well, we've had lots of, lots of discussion here. I don't know where we want to go. I know where I want to go. I, I'm most comfortable with the three point two. But I think we have a very significant difference in, in our philosophies and comfort levels, so not gonna hold it against anyone for, for variations there. But that's just where, where I'm most comfortable.
I guess I, I said two point five. I will agree with Commissioner Starley and Commissioner Swalison, if they are still there at three. I'm willing to go to three.
Well, that's gonna bring a majority right there.
Unless James begins to do an auctioneering.
Try here, three point one. Try once, go try.
Well, I know I don't get a vote here, but I really do appreciate the thoughtful discussion, I really do.
Here, here, I, I do as well. I don't know that it always happens this, this manner. And that's above all, extremely valuable.
Well.
We're a good team, and, and we're doing good work. And I, I trust we will continue to do good work just through this process, you know?
I guess I'm gonna come back to, you, you were sort of swaying me a little higher with your discussion. But I, I just want to make sure we think long and hard about negotiations, about inflation, and about the fact that we're still in the middle of a pandemic. And there's so much we don't know that's ahead of us. And I want our county to be as prepared as we can without making it difficult for our taxpayers. But I want to be prepared to provide the services that we need.
And, and I'm most concerned with those that are struggling today. And I, and I know it's a considerable number of people. And that's why they're looking at us right now and saying, well, if two point two is enough, why aren't you going with two point two? You know, but I hope they'll appreciate the thought process of the other challenges that we have to take into consideration. I just didn't want to go any higher, you know, I, I'm trying to put something in there, but not go too far. Because I recognize the, the needs of a great, a great many of people in the county, and I just don't want to overstress it to where they're really having to make very difficult, you know, some are making very difficult decisions every day.
So on the, with the art of compromise, let's look at a three point one.
Yeah, what's that number, Brady?
His calculator's getting a workout.
Is that like, it goes, err?
It's gonna be ninety-something. Close to a hundred. Closer to a hundred.
And that's about ninety-five thousand addition. Takes you to three hundred and thirty thousand increase versus two thirty-five on your screen.
At this point, I think we're just looking for a motion. Unless, I may welcome any more for the thoughts or discussion. But I think that's where we're at.
Mr. Chair, I am ready to make a motion for three point one percent.
Okay, we have a motion, uh, is there support? I will support for the discussion. I, since the lack of a second aside from the chair as, as dissent, and I'd love to hear more about that. It's just, just too far away, the three is, the three is kind of-
When you start at two point two zero six eight, you know, I'm sitting here giving a consideration, and I recognize that, that extra, it's more symbolic, I think, more than anything. And I mean that, and I, I'm normally not a symbolic county guy, but, you know, I'm being honest with you, I just, you know, the difference from the public perspective of a three to a three point one, and this, it's just, I don't know.
And I'm not making that motion being symbolic, I'm thinking we need those funds.
I know, I recognize it.
I, I agree with Commissioner Swalison, so I was sitting here thinking, okay, is it really that big of a deal? There's a ten thousand dollar difference, really, ten thousand dollars is not worth... But that's, that was my hesitation, it's like, oh, we're over three, I really didn't want to go over three, you know, so. So symbolic, really.
It is.
Commissioner Starley, did you have, or I thought I saw you or heard you.
It could be.
Oh, no. When, when, when you said, when you started at two point two, the first thing I thought was, I'll start at three point six five because of that, that's my, that's my, that's why I measure everything, the, the, the initial levy, the final levy, I measure it all to the average.
No, I, I appreciate that, and I realize that. But when I look at the numbers, and even these have some contingencies baked into it.
True.
That, that's meaningful to me.
Yes.
That's the hard math, you know, put down. And so, if I really thought those contingencies that were there, you know, really were insufficient, you know, then I would feel differently, but I think they are, they're, they're sufficient there. I'm trying to project out those additional costs beyond what we've projected, or, and we've had some discussion on it, on some that might be there. Certainly, the inflation can be one that affects every area.
And health insurance.
And the health insurance is, is a known unknown, right? I mean, we're all, we're all very cognizant it's going to go back up, we just don't know the magnitude.
And I guess I, you know, looked at it as a, a kind of a compromise between the four or five and the two point two, because three percent kind of says, we have a lot of unknowns out there, but we don't want to do too much requirement from the public in a levy that would, you know, send them into more depression and survival ship, because it's, it's, it's on all of us to understand who we represent in the county, from all ends.
All right, well, we've had some good discussion, and we'll see where this vote takes us. We have a motion on the table for a three point one percent increase to the, for our levy. And whoops, my screen went dark. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion pass it, or-
I was still debating, okay.
Motion fails, two to three. I'm so programmed to say motion passes, it's good to get an exercise in failing.
Well, that's why we did it.
Okay, okay, very good. Well, here we are, though, back at the-
Mr. Chair, I will make a motion to set the levy for twenty twenty-two at three percent.
Thank you, Commissioner Swalison, we have a motion, is there support?
Starley, support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley, motion support for further discussion? Had a lot. I, I'm not gonna obstruct it, I, I don't feel strongly against it. I, I appreciate the movements and the, and the thoughts put into this. It does give us significant, and there are significant contingencies, I just see any deviation from that average, with all due respect, short sighted.
And that's fair.
And that's, that's just me. So you'll, I'm sure, hear it again next year. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously, and that feels really good. Thank you, thank you, Board.
And I want to thank everyone as well. I think this was a great exercise in discussion and compromise and working through it. So I, I do appreciate this, the makeup of this board.
I feel like we've, we've come to a good compromise to both keep the burden on taxpayers right now low, and still to lessen that long-term burden, so I think it's, I think it's good. Auditor Powers?
Yeah, I should have added while you were discussing, but, where? So the addition to the capital reserve? Or some to contingency, or all to capital reserve?
I, I feel like capital reserve is the, the biggest outlier, but I don't know. I guess maybe we need to have more discussion about that.
I thought I heard folks saying that there are a number of different expenses that could come up, and putting it in contingency would leave flexibility.
Okay.
That would leave the flexibility for this next year.
Except it has to go somewhere. We divide the contingency up at the end into departments.
Gotcha.
Where the negotiations go, so it has to, it has to lay somewhere. It could be in the general fund, as a contingency item in the general fund.
I'm sorry, contingency in the general fund?
It could be a contingency, could set up an account.
That makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
With the thought process we had getting there with inflation and other things, and thinking it was going to be generally across, I think that makes the most sense.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Do you need a motion for that?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Just instruction.
It may not, it might not hurt. I said, yeah, make a motion, I don't know.
I'll make a motion to put the additional levy beyond, beyond the two point two to that three into the contingency in the general, the general reserve.
And I support.
Motion support, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Auditor Powers for that.
Thank you.
That ask. Okay, well, let's just move on up to land services. Well, I mean-
You mean we need to take a break?
On to item seven, employee concerns, Commissioner concerns. Commissioner reports meeting updates, any, any reports or updates anyone would like to share?
Yes, the only update I have, I don't have it with me. But the Arrowhead little survey that we all participated in, ranking, field and all of that, that's been done in, when we have our meeting in January, I'll bring that.
Thank you.
It was interesting, very interesting.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, good, but interesting.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley, anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Sullivan?
So at our Cook County Historical Society meeting, the group has made a significant change, and will be meeting every other month, rather than monthly. So be looking for minutes from the meetings on an every other month basis. But the determination was made that really a lot of work right now needs to be done in committees and work groups. And so that is the change there. And then at the Airport Commission, we are very pleased to find out we are going to qualify for some of that infrastructure money. And we should be getting a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars a year for five years, which will help for the master plan, potentially a hangar, some parking issues. So that is really exciting news. And then last thing, and April, this is important for you, you can cross off your list for committees for twenty twenty-two, the Cook County Water Management Plan Advisory Board. We have terminated that board, because now, instead of operating as a county, we are operating by watershed, which makes much more sense. But we had our final meeting last Friday and dissolved ourselves, so one less committee.
All right. Any other reports, meetings to note? Concerns? Yeah, well, meetings to note is the next one, so I don't know if anyone else has shared anything there. Moving on to correspondence, there's a lodging tax comparison, which again, every month just blows me away. It's, it's, it's what we all feel, I guess, is what's happening in, in our county. And then recognition of staff for item nine, new hires, Nathan Carlson, maintenance, welcome. This is maintenance worker two, very happy to have you join the team, much, much needed. And then we also have, I guess it was just officiated there with the transfer with Art already, so it's not new hire, but Art's still new. And then we have item ten is adjournment. Would entertain a motion?
A motion to adjourn?
Thank you, Commissioner Swalison, is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins, motion support, any further discussion? Hearing or seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
And happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you.
Be safe and healthy.
Yes.
Thanks for making the levy setting so much fun.